Ladies and gentlemen, please have your attention. The city manager would like to take the floor for us before we proceed.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight. Due to the volume of people that we have here tonight and the due to the volume of people that probably want to speak, we're changing things up a little bit tonight. You need to fill out a comment card in the back. See if you could raise your hand, please, in the table back there. Please, if you want to speak tonight, you need to fill out a comment card and you will be addressed by the mayor in order as you filled out your comment card based off of what you want to speak to tonight, either under public comments or under an item on the agenda. So again, we've got a couple of minutes before the meeting. You're not interrupting anybody. If you're sitting down, don't be embarrassed. Get up, go fill out a comment card, and we'll start the meeting promptly at 6:00 o'clock. Thank you.
I will. Please join me for a prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this meeting of the City of Madeira Beach and all that enter here today. We pray that your presence stay with us as we make decisions that will affect the future of Madeira Beach, that your hand be in all that is accomplished here, and that your wisdom guide all actions that are made here tonight. Only with your guidance and never-ending grace are we allowed to have hope in tomorrow, for tomorrow will never come for the forty-nine victims of the Orlando tragedy. But today, here, now, we lift up these victims and their families so that they would feel your loving touch and the peace that only comes through you. Today, we ask that you continue to bless those who love, live, and long to make America a better place. Always in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Shantz? Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Here. And once again, Commissioner Poe has to be excused this evening. One of her pets are sick at home. And also, before we proceed to go, I ask everyone to please silence your cellphones. And once again, ladies, I ask you to please keep your passions within due bounds this evening. We're all neighbors, we all are taxpayers, we all are voters, so be respectful to the person at the podium. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe, Commissioner Poe, excuse me. Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
All right. This time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Is there any questions from the commission? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, moving on. The dies log, do we have any reports or any questions from the commission on the log?
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the dies log is self-explanatory. We can entertain any questions. If there aren't any questions, and I did see some, I'll call them stragglers, but late attendees, if anyone intends to speak tonight, you need to fill out a comment card in the back by C on the table there. Give that to either C or the clerk, and then you'll be allowed to speak. You'll be called upon in the order that you submitted your card. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next, public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do you have any cards for anybody that'd like to speak with public comments this evening?
Jeff Brown?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey D. Brown. I own a business at 201, 150th Avenue, and I also reside in Madeira Beach. I would like to thank you, Commissioner Lister, for mentioning those victims in your invocation. But before I begin, I think we should also take another moment of silence for personal prayer for those who lost their lives in this horrific event, and that God will give those people rest and heal the hearts of those who are lost. So just for a moment, personal prayer. Truly fortunate to be here this evening. If I may, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I would like to take a moment to address the conduct of one of our elected officials in last month's Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm not a highly educated guy, but I get by, but it was painfully obvious to this observer that an ambush was predetermined and pre-planned by this official. The questions were so pointed and so precise, one could only surmise that this commissioner was coached by a highly educated person, dare I say, one in the field of law. Questions designed explicitly to open our city up to possible litigation. And I stress "our" city because this particular commissioner went as far as to call this "her" city and not "our" city. Since when does one speak for all? And if that wasn't enough, this commissioner then verbally assaulted our city manager in the press, and I'm saying, and I quote, "I'm going after him. This is my city." Once again, Madam Commissioner, I have to interject, this is our city. And then, after that, to take it further, you stated your intentions for legal action against our city manager and a complainant. Madam Commissioner, I feel that you have crossed the precipice of public servant to one of public verbal assault, serving no one but your own personal thoughts, and I can no longer see you effectively presiding in your seat without prejudice. I supported you and even voted for you when you ran for this office, but in light of all of these current circumstances and as a constituent in your district, I ask for your resignation. If you choose not to resign your seat, I understand, but I can personally assure you, you will not run opposed in our next election. Thank you.
Sam Baker?
Good evening. I'm Sam Baker. I live on Pruitt Drive, and I'm a member of the petition committee that circulated a petition the last three weeks to put this planned development zoning up to a public vote. We're trying to get it on the ballot so that the public can vote on it. We turned in 1,025 signatures of voters. I got a note today that 1,025 signatures, with the exception of eighty-five, has been rejected on what we seem to think are frivolous grounds. So the next step is the court, and I consider this a huge waste of money. Thank you.
Jim Everett?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and staff. I too just wanted to comment on Commissioner Poe's, what I consider to be somewhat of a tirade at the last commission meeting. And I guess I take exception with it because as someone who serves on an appointed board, you all get your packets well ahead of time before the meetings. You all have plenty of time to review those. If you have any questions, I know at least our board, if we have any questions or concerns, we address those to city staff and give them an opportunity to address those prior to the public meeting, to make sure that we don't misunderstand something, or if we have found something that we believe to be an error, we certainly want to point that out to city staff ahead of time before the board takes action on it. The actions that I saw last month were those that were calculated and intended to derail the motion on the floor and also, most blatantly, to purposely expose the city to legal action, in my opinion. It was obviously well-scripted, and I'll just reiterate what Jeff mentioned, and it appeared to be scripted, and I'm not so sure she was the author. But I just know that when I review a packet, I take that to staff and ask it to be looked at or corrected. I don't ambush city staff in a public meeting. So I just think that was egregious behavior. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Steve Page?
Hi, Steve Page, 20,001 Gulf Boulevard, Indian Shores, Mr. Mayor and Commission. I've been removing, I've been in the mountains of North Carolina, and I was going to come back late today, but I, so I came last night because this is so important to me. I, as you know, we developed the Marriott Courtyard property. Been doing, on that property, been there a long time, so I've dealt with a lot of staff, a lot of absence of staff, a new city manager. I just, I feel passionate because I've developed in a lot of towns since the 1980s and dealt with a lot of municipalities. And I will tell you, it's shocking how great things are going in Madeira Beach, from the Publix, the City Hall we're standing in, the fire station, the Marriott, the CVS, the Publix, the Walgreens. It's amazing. And I will honestly say that this, this city manager, Shane Crawford, is the best I've ever worked with. And he is very helpful, he's respectful, he's always watching out for the city's best interests, and he's not always easy on you. And we had a lot of issues, but we always worked through. And the whole council, Sam, it was wonderful. I had a long time getting that project approved because we didn't have a city manager for a while, and previously, it just went on and on for almost years. I don't think it would be there today without you guys. And I just want to say, I've seen this. When things are going great like they are in Madeira Beach, here comes a counter, you know, to attack it. When things, the city goes dead and nothing's happening, a movement comes to try to bring it back. And I just would hate to see everything that's happened here, you know, be stopped. I think it's great, and I'm proud to be a property owner here in Madeira Beach, so.
Madam City Clerk?
Sam Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, Commission members, staff. I moved, or I didn't move here, I bought a property here in 1991. I bought it because it was a boat dock. That's all I wanted, was a boat dock. I fell in love with the little city in spite of all of its spots that were somewhat blighted. Because of that blight, I didn't want my grandkids and kids walking by certain properties in Madeira Beach. We affectionately called those properties the cocaine cottages back in the old days. So not being a developer, I took it upon myself to take the risk to get rid of the cocaine cottages, redo the Marina, build the Madeira Bay Resort, and I'm real happy I did. But today, I just really want to thank you guys, the people at this table, for bringing this city together and making it someplace that we can all be proud of. The city has worked hard to get rid of these blighted areas, to bring industry, new building, new things, and I just want to say thank you. I'm proud of you, proud of our city.
Madam City Clerk?
Renee Krupp?
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor, and people of the public. As I mentioned before when I approached this board, I've said I've been here eight years. I would like to say tonight, honestly, this is the first time I've ever spoken here, that people are looking at me. Usually, people look down at their little thing, and it just goes on and on, and I feel like I'm talking to the frickin' wall or to the beautiful view that we have. However, I have never felt that I've been heard. I bring forward the idea that the majority of the people that seem to be against development are not really against development, they're against certain projects. But the biggest part to me is, ethically, I don't feel that we've been given fair due in terms of just saying what we feel. It feels like it's a done deal, it's going forward. Do you ever feel like being in front of a steamroller? It's coming, it's coming at you, and you're going to get it whether you like it or not. I don't care what you have to say, I don't care what part of truth can prevail, it doesn't really matter because the decision has been made, and that's how it comes across. I've called people, I don't get phone calls back. That's very disconcerting as a citizen. Yeah, I'm one of the small guys, I'm not one of the developers, I'm just somebody here who lives here, eight years, not brand-new, but definitely not a thirty- or forty-year person, but I do have a vested interest in how Madeira Beach is. And I feel you people have done a great disservice by not hearing. I cannot imagine, I'm one of the people that gathered signatures on a very hot several days, driving around door-to-door, seeing somebody in the yard, asking them. I will tell you honestly, ninety-five percent of the people that I approached said yes, they agreed with this. There were a few people that said no, but it's human individuals going forward, really trying to bring forward what the feel in the community is, and it's out there. And now that I hear that the majority of them have been dismissed, it's very, once again, disconcerting. And ethically, I do not feel that you have embraced, for the good of all of us. You are there, I grant you, tonight you're looking at me, and that I appreciate, but I don't feel that this has been the process all along from the last two or three years coming forward to now. Anyway, I would like you to really consider to hear and believe in the bottom of your hearts, those people, 1,025 people, really feel that they would like to have a conversation of what this next phase of development looks like for Madeira Beach. I am not against development, I am against exercise and excess density, and somehow that message seems not to be heard. Anyway, thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk?
There are no more for public comment.
There's no public comments. Next consent agenda, none?
Was it listed as for public comment, or is it for a particular item on the agenda? I have...
Did you sign for public comment?
Did you put it down for as...
Did you comment on the...
Between generic public comments for items on the agenda and also for items relating to developments concerning items on the agenda.
I put it down for items on the agenda. Items on the agenda, general public comment.
She signed, and I signed right after.
Call them up, Mayor.
Did you sign a card? Excuse me. Ma'am.
Wait, what?
Excuse me, ma'am.
What was your name?
Just make sure for the public record she has a card signed. We'll give you time.
I'm Kathy Bierman, Boca Seaga Drive. Okay. I'm going to excuse my back.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am, you have to address the commission.
I address you. Two-two-five Boca Seaga Drive, around the corner from you. He brings traps to my house. But I will tell you, I've never been more proud of all that have gone.
Kathy, you've got to address the commission, ma'am. Sorry, that's the rules.
It's always that. Okay. Come in, I...
I'll still bring you the raccoon.
Okay. I've never been more proud of this city that has gone out and really walked the streets, knocked on doors, little old men that never answered the door, and we had to convince them we weren't going to do something. We had people doing anything. And more important is, people that you would be amazed that would sign and don't want you to know. That's okay. When all these people are here, what's the hurry? Would you not let it be? Could you not consider it? Nobody's saying it, make it disappear. We're saying, slow it down. What is so bad with that? Anybody, raise your hand and tell me, what is so bad with slowing it down? People felt that much about it? This is your town, it is mine. I have property that I'd love to make... No! So give a break. We're not saying, stop it, slow it, and really recognize, this town loves that much that over a thousand people walked and signed and everything, and you're telling me, maybe they didn't do it right? Do you really care they didn't do it right? Tell me, look at me, and tell me, that makes a difference. This is your town. Whether they signed the right thing, this man said, oh, you make a difference. Come on! This is us. I drive my boat here. I don't drive it, that's terrible. I take my boat, anything. Give a break, slow down, and make everybody love you. And you know what? Let them stand for you and say, we're going to consider this again, and be proud of your town. I sure am. And let me be proud of you. Thank you.
Steve Miller?
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, I too am going to protest your... I too am going to protest the treatment of the petitioners, the submitted petition, and I'll read something. Now, I sent a letter to each of you, and I never got a response from anybody. You're each individually responsible for what is happening here in the City of Madeira Beach. As an interested citizen and a registered voter in the City of Madeira Beach, I am again requesting that you formally acknowledge the suspension of ordinance 204, 214-08 as of 8/03 AM, June 10, 2016, the time at which the petition demanding such action, and signed by 1,025 individuals, was received by the city clerk. By the clear terms of the city charter, as long as the city contests the sufficiency of the petition, the suspension must remain in effect until a court determines the petition is deficient, and a court determines this. This is the city charter. The city attorney is not a judge and does not have the authority to unilaterally declare the petition insufficient. If he thinks it's insufficient, take it to the courts. Until a court, until a judge says it's insufficient, the ordinance is suspended legally, and I don't see how you can ignore that. However, in the case you decide to vote and violate the charter and vote on these three agenda items, which rely on that ordinance for legality, I would point out that none of the items meet the necessary criteria for approval specified in the City Ordinance Section 110-393, copied in part below. The items fail to meet the criteria specified in Item 2, in that they do not comply with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, a formal planning document adopted in 2009 which states as its primary goal, ensure that the residential family and beach community character charter of the City of Madeira Beach is maintained and protected. It doesn't, that's what it says, and it actually is saying this in the comprehensive plan, which is a higher-level plan and more potent than the special area plan. If there's something in the special area plan that doesn't obey the comprehensive plan, it's illegal. Wild, and then they have bunch of little things about it, but wild. And also, they have encouraging an orderly and aesthetic mix of land uses by allowing a new development and redevelopment that will enhance and protect the city's existing character. The special area plan is not to be ignored. It's in your, it's in your responsibility to, you shall see that it complies with the special area plan, and it does not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any further public comment, Madam City Clerk?
No. Unless I've missed somebody.
Consent agenda, none, unfinished business, ordinance 2006...
You filled out a card? Excuse me. Did you fill out the reason where it says agenda item? Did you put public comment? What was your name? So, no? For the, under the developments? Okay, then you'll be called at that time. Did you have a general public comment once?
Yes. I'm Linda Hine. I live in Boca Vista, 150th Avenue. I'm one of the petitioners on the petition that went around. I just wanted to appreciate you for letting me come up here and talk, and, Mr. Trask, I'm very disappointed that you didn't agree that the petition met the requirements. That's a lawyer's opinion, our lawyer says it does, but that's beside the point. Mr. Mayor, you said several times that you thought different numbers of people were disagreed with this, and we disagree with the height and density, not the development itself. They've always been under a hundred, but whether you accept the petition or not, you now know 1,025 registered voters in this city have said they want you to reconsider that planned development. That's, that's a lot. That's not, you've got two dozen green shirts, you've got developers coming up here to talk. That shouldn't sway you anymore because of the 1,025 citizens that have signed. That should be at least as powerful as green shirts and developers talking. And by the way, I love the Marriott over here, what is it, four stories over parking? That would be excellent. I think that's what we want, it's the height and density. I think you have the authority to reduce the height and density or postpone the vote tonight, and I sincerely request that the Board of Commissioners please consider doing that, either reducing the height, reducing the density, or just postponing the vote till we figure this out. There's too many people in this town that just don't agree with it. Thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk, is there any more public comment?
I don't think so. Oh, wait, wait, I see a green card.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Nelson, four twenty Boca Seaga Drive. I kinda contemplated saying maybe I'm from another city, 'cause it seems like, for you guys outside, city and developers seem to get a little more attention than the Madeira Beach residents. At least, that's how it feels to us. I just wanted to comment about the petition. I heard word that you guys are discounting a number of the signatures, and I don't know whether that's right or wrong in a legal term, but I would like to say that, you know, one thousand twenty-five of your residents signed it. Doesn't that mean something to you? Now, either you're saying that we didn't understand what we are signing, that it was somehow misrepresented, or you're just not listening. And either way, it's insulting because we do know what's happening. We've been reading articles, we've been coming to the meetings, we have been out and about, listening to what people have had to say. And when a thousand of your residents are saying, "Hold up, this is too much, scale it back, like everyone else has said, we're not against development, we're saying, don't leave those blighted properties blighted," we're not saying that. We're just saying, step back and think. Look at the height, look at the density. It's too much. And it feels like, no one is listening to us. And if you discount these petitions, it's just another- no one's listening. What are you afraid of? Are you afraid that it goes to referendum, what the outcome will be? Maybe you should be. Maybe- maybe that's the problem. But either way, I wish that you would listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn Eckert?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marilyn Eckert. I've been a resident of Madeira Beach for fifteen years. And before I moved to Madeira Beach, I checked out cities from Pensacola all the way down to Sarasota, to pick the right place, the place for me. And I loved Madeira Beach from the very beginning, because it has the small-town atmosphere that I like, but it has what we need. I've loved living here, and I hate for it to become what some of you envision, and wish I- which I see as a tourist town, full of high-rises and constant traffic jams, not to mention possibly accidents. It seems that every time I leave my home, I see another small building torn down to make room for a taller one, that can be squeezed into the space that- past the space that the other one was. Look at the one on one fortieth. It's built right out on the sidewalk. More and more, I feel like I'm being squeezed between these high-rises, and now you want to make them even higher. Mr. Mayor, you keep saying that you want to create jobs. What kind of jobs are you wanting to create? I doubt if there would be many Madeira Beach residents doing all this building. There'll be developers, but what about the residents? Which won't be long-term work, anyway. And as for the hotels, the shops, and the restaurants that you want to put in, that are projected, those will create low-paying jobs. Do you really think that we need more of these? The shops at John's Pass, the rental condos, and small restaurants that are already here provide enough low- low-paying jobs. We could use another restaurant or two, maybe in the old Liver Rock's location, but don't tear down the two that we already have, that seem to be doing pretty good. Brown Boxer and Subway, they may not be fancy restaurants, but they're doing- they seem to be doing a good business. Don't tear down our post office so that we have to go to Seminole to mail our packages. How about promoting Madeira Beach as a small community that it is, with happy residents and happy tourist delight? Promote the small businesses that we have, and help them to succeed, for many of them are struggling. That's what is needed. Then you won't have to tear them down to build larger ones. We have enough of those already. Thank you for your time.
Madam City Clerk?
Sandy Holloway?
Good evening. My name is Sandy Holloway. I have lived in this area for forty-nine years, and I was probably maybe among a few people who are back here that actually saw when Madeira Beach was turned into a city in nineteen forty-seven. And it happened at Bay Palm's Park. There were two hundred and fifteen people who lived in Madeira Beach at that time. This little beach is one of the last best- I've been turned off?
No.
You don't like what I'm saying? This is one of the last wonderful little beach communities that we have, and I think it is a treasure. And I think everyone sitting here that doesn't have a green shirt on realizes that this is a little jewel. We don't want it to be another Clearwater Beach. We've been- we've been assured, "Oh, no, it won't be." But you know, you can dress it up any way that you want, but it's approaching that kind of a look. And you are giving us something that we do not want. The number of people that have signed this petition, you all were elected, they're your constituents. They're the people who count. The developers are not the people who count. They come in with their suits, they fly over with a helicopter, "Ah, this looks like a nice green space. I think this is ours." They don't live here. Perhaps this developer does. He might be an exception. I don't know all the specifics about all of it, but that's normally what happens. We can make a buck, we'll leave, and we don't care what happens to the residents. The majority of people, I believe, that are sitting here in this audience today, they live here, they work here, they travel on these roads. And you are going to make it extremely difficult for people who pay taxes and call Madeira Beach their home. They want this to be kept their home, and they want it to be as livable as possible. And I think it is up to each and every one of you to do your jobs to make it and keep it a livable place. So many people say, "Madeira Beach, what a lovely, lovely spot. It still has the ambiance and the feel of old Florida." And isn't that what we want? Bigger- bigger is not better, sometimes, but in most- most cases, it is not. And I think you should think long and hard about what you are doing, and what you are forcing upon the people who are your residents, and the people that you serve. Thank you very much.
Any more public comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, I got a text message from C. in the back. A majority of the people are putting down development for the reason that they want to comment, and I would strongly suggest those are items one, two, and three on the agenda. I think that that's a reoccurring theme. So, right now, public comment is for items not on the agenda. If you have an issue with the Karnes Development, if you have an issue with the Holton Development, that is to come. You will have your turn to speak, but that is not- right now is not the appropriate time to be talking about those developments, Mr. Mayor.
And public comment is for items not on the agenda. So is there anybody who would like to fill out a card to make a comment for something that is not on the agenda? Return to public or city business. Okay. That's it then, Madam City Clerk? Consent agenda, we had none, unfinished business, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero five. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero five. In ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, greeting Article Four of Chapter Forty-two of the Code of Ordinances relating to synthetic drugs, providing for intent, definitions, synthetic drug substance determination, prohibited acts, enforcements, and penalties, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero five by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance two zero one six dash zero five on the second and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Based on second and final reading, Mr. Mayor, staff recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner- Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right. Next, contracts and agreements. Mr. C. Manager, if you would proceed with the five contracts and agreements.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is an approval- approval of agreement with Pinellas County School Board regarding bicentennial park. We use bicentennial park now, and we also added the idea of being able to pick up there for- with our water taxi for events at the city center, and staff recommendations for approval.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item number one, under contracts and agreements. I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk?
Richard Lewis?
Yes.
Dick Lewis, five sixty-one Crystal Drive. It seems that everyone is quite enthusiastic about this enterprise, so it looks like I'll be the lone voice in expressing a lack of enthusiasm for it. It has been generally publicized that the anticipated city contribution to this would be in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Lewis, we're on the contract dealing with the school board.
You called my name.
Are we doing each one individually?
Yes.
I thought we were doing it as a whole.
I think there's a motion for each individual one. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? It's not a consent agenda item?
It's not consent agenda item.
Yes, each individual item, yeah.
Okay, 'cause we've done it both ways in the past.
The last one, Mr. Lewis, and I'll make sure that she calls you up. That's number five.
I apologize. We've done it both ways in the past.
So, Mr. Lewis, stand close. We're gonna get to you in a minute. There's a seat right here in the front.
That's okay, we'll go talk. Mr. City Attorney, would you please proceed with item number two, under contracts and agreements?
City Manager or City Attorney?
Are we taking a-
We're gonna take them individually, Mr. Mayor, so we need a vote on number one.
Yeah, but wait a minute. I get back to where we're at now.
I two, I one.
Got it. Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right. Contracts and agreements. Item number two, Mr. City Manager.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this is a recurring contract for us to use the school for after-school programs, summer programs and such. It's a recurring contract. Staff recommendations for approval.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments? Is there a green card filled out?
It's not for this item.
Okay. With the Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz, excuse me. Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Contracts and agreements, item number three, Mr. City Manager.
Again, Mr. Mayor, approval of emergency medical service continuing education agreement. Right there, it's continuing agreement, staff recommendations for approval.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Is there any green cards, Madam City Clerk?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Item number four, Mr. C. Manager, contracts and agreements.
Authorization to execute financial audit engagement letter for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen with Wells Hauser Schatzel PA in accordance with RFP number fifteen dash one one zero zero. And, Mr. Mayor, I defer to Finance Director Canalia for a quick explanation.
This is just an annual requirement as part of the financial audit process outlining the expectations of the auditors. The scope of work doesn't change from year to year, but this is just establishing the expectation that they will be providing an audit opinion on the financial statements, and the corresponding work that goes along with that. So, similar to prior years.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to authorize and execute the financial audit?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right. Item number five, Mr. City Manager, under contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bid award of RFP two thousand sixteen dash zero one Madeira Beach Ferry Services to Hubbard Marina, and contract approval. Again, and Mr. Lewis will be welcome to speak. The content of this award and the contract is that the city would subsidize this for twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the first three years. After that, the city actually gains revenue and gets a piece of the pie based off the revenue generated by this. This is a- and been an ongoing project, and something that, again, I was asked to start in two thousand and twelve, and we're finally getting it to materialize. And so, with that, staff recommendation is obviously for approval, but we obviously have some people in the audience that would like to speak to it.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is- any cards?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, you had a card, and you wanted to speak?
Thank you. Dick Lewis, five sixty-one Crystal Drive. I'll have to start over. I wasn't asked as to whether or not I wanted to contribute my share of that twenty-five thousand dollars, but I'll volunteer the answer. The answer is no. I can't see how this could be a viable operation and make any money at all. So the city is gonna be on the hook for this money until you decide to close the deal. To be a viable operation, it would seem that adequate parking had to be at each of the ferry stops, and that doesn't exist. I can't see the benefit to the average Madeira Beach citizen of this enterprise to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. So I encourage you to reconsider this contract situation. It simply is not a paying proposition. I can't understand how it could be practical at all. And I might add that contract information was not available to the citizens online, along with the other packet information that is available online to the citizens. So we had no opportunity to exactly see what was going to occur tonight. But I urge you to reconsider this. Twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, considering our debt situation in this city, and the ferry situation is a loser. Thank you very much.
You have any further comments?
No.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right. New business. Before we proceed with new business, I wanted to give the floor to the City Attorney.
We had a lot of discussions, a lot of comments tonight about the petition and the certificate of insufficiency, and so I just wanted to go over some of the issues, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Healy to address one particular issue, so that everybody understands what's going on. The petition was received. There were, according to the petition, a thousand and twenty-five signatures. I believe it's a thousand and forty-seven signatures that have been reviewed by the supervisory election, so a little bit more. We received it late in the after- I received it late in the afternoon on the tenth. I know it was- it came into the city in the morning of the tenth. We tried to respond to it as quickly as we possibly could, so that the public could understand the position that the city was in. The city clerk has a legal obligation to determine the sufficiency of the petition as it comes in, in other words, whether it meets the provisions of the charter or the city code. In doing that, I was asked to comment and prepare a draft letter for the city clerk to consider and review. In my review of the petition, I did- In my review of the petition, I determined that there were three portions of insufficiency in the petition, and I want to go through them just very briefly so that you understand. Each one of the petitions that were submitted within the city falsely represented what the ordinance was that was asked to be reconsidered. Written the bold block letters and underlined under the title, "A Petition for Referendum", it had this statement. This petition requires reconsideration by the Commission of Ordinance 2014-8, which purports to be an amendment to the Madera Beach Code of Ordinances, Part B, Land Development Regulations. And here's the key, which adds, among other things, a PD Plan Development and Zoning District which permits increased height and density in the city. There are three items mentioned in that title. Two of them were inaccurate and misrepresented the ordinance. Specifically, the PD Plan Development Zoning District was created in 2005. It wasn't being added to the code, and it wasn't added to the code by the adoption of that particular ordinance. It was adopted 11 years ago. The ordinance in question was making some housekeeping cleanup of that particular code section. So that particular portion of the petition misrepresented what was being done. The second portion was, it addressed an increased height. If you take your time and you read that ordinance, you will find that the word "height" is nowhere in that ordinance. It is not used once. That's a misrepresentation to the people that were reviewing the petitions. For those two reasons, I believe that it was a misrepresentation to the public when it was being circulated. The number two reason why I believe that the petition was insufficient is because the Charter specifically requires the petitioner committee, made up of five people authorized by the Charter, to circulate the petition. It specifically says the petitioner committee is responsible for circulating the petitions. Two of the five people that were on the committee actually circulated the petition. Those two people, Linda McCarter and Linda Heine, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, gathered 84 signatures. That obviously is not sufficient enough to meet the 25% requirement under the Charter. The third reason why I believe the petition was insufficient was the fact that the Charter requires that every petition that's signed be in affidavit form. They weren't in affidavit form. They weren't in affidavit form because of the fact that the affiant was not placed under oath. Those are the three reasons why I believe it was insufficient. We tried to let the public know as quickly as possible. The city clerk had 10 days in which to do that. We did it in one day. And the purpose of that was so that you were aware of it when you came to the meeting tonight. I asked the city clerk to consider the certificate of insufficiency that I prepared. It was not acceptable to her the way that it was written by me. She made specific change relative to language that I was giving her advice about it, and of course, that was acceptable to me. She issued this certificate on June 13th. Obviously, there are different approaches that the petitioner committee can move forward on, whether or not that they want to correct the petition, and they have the opportunity to do that, or they have the other opportunities that are set forth in the Charter, and obviously the commission would be happy to consider those. But at this point, the petition is insufficient, and so the ordinance is not going to be suspended. In addition to that, there are some specific reasons why we believe that the suspension of the ordinance doesn't even really matter tonight. And based upon that, we've asked Mr. Healy as the consultant for the city of Madera Beach to comment on that, and he has, in fact, prepared a memorandum that was issued today, two days after the petition was issued, on what his thoughts were relative to Ordinance 2014-08. And so at this point, I'm going to pass off to Mr. Healy to discuss that ordinance briefly, and then we'll move on to the actual public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. My name is Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano Associates, and I am here assisting the city's community development staff with respect to the matter at hand. By way of quick background, my resume is on file with the city. I'm a practicing city planner with 47 years of experience, practicing and working here in Pinellas County since 1977. I am a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners. As the City Attorney mentioned, I reviewed the same petition and included in my memorandum the very wording, taken the underlying portion of the petition. I won't read the whole thing again. The two operative parts of it that I have addressed, in addition to Mr. Trast's comment on the legal sufficiency, were the wording that it, among other things, adds a PD Plan Development Zoning District, which it does not, and which permits increased height and density, which it does not. My finding is that the petition on its face is inaccurate and misleading in terms of what it purports to represent. What I want to say to the commission very clearly is that Ordinance 2014-08, which I participated in writing, did not, in fact, add a PD district to the land development regulations. As Mr. Trast pointed out, the PD district has existed in your code and been available for use since 2005. Nor did it make any provision for increased height and density in the city. So for those two reasons, I find that while the folks who signed and perhaps circulated this petition did so with good intentions, on its face doesn't do what the petition maintains that it does. Specifically, the two things that Ordinance 2014-08 did were to require the city commission, and let me emphasize it again, require the city commission to use the PD district for certain, in certain situations, and it clarified the application process for plan development, both of which have been very helpful and frankly protected the city's interest in undertaking such as is before you tonight. You had available to you the PD process and could have taken advantage of it, of your own initiative. This ordinance merely required that you do so with all of its built-in protections for an accompanying site plan. Some of the city elected officials and planning board members may remember that the genesis for that amendment was that prior to that ordinance, the PD district didn't necessarily require an accompanying site plan. For someone to ask for a planned development district without telling you what it involved seemed illogical, and that's why we wrote the ordinance. That's what the ordinance does. It does only those two things. It specifies that a planned development rezoning application has to be accompanied by a development plan, and enumerates specifically what's proposed, and it requires that the PD district be used pursuant to certain applications as enumerated in your comprehensive plan and the Town Center Special Area Plan. My point in all of that is that nothing in that petition, were it to be valid, were the commission to repeal that ordinance, or the referendum to repeal or suspend it, would change anything that's in front of this commission with respect to the two projects that are at issue tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to proceed with the hearing. If I could go ahead and start on that. I understand the first item on the agenda is a development agreement with Holiday Isle Marina. May I just go ahead and proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Proceed with title only.
Okay, anyone that's going to go ahead and speak on this, if you haven't already signed the card, if you could sign that card and get it to the, so we can get it to the city clerk for discussion purposes. In addition to that, anyone that's going to speak, even though this is the second or third quasi-judicial hearing on this matter, we're going to treat this, even though it's going to come to you in a summary, we're going to treat it as quasi-judicial. So I'd like you to stand up and raise your right hand so I can swear you all under oath if you're going to speak tonight. Anyone that's going to speak, please? Okay. You swear that the testimony you are going to give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Correct.
Looks like everybody nodded yes or said yes. Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, normally we would do a summary of the applications and standards to be applied and the burden of proof and identify all the parties. We're going to go directly to the applicant and have the applicant give a summary as to what this matter is, and then we're going to go to city staff. And you'll remember that there are a couple of interested parties, Mr. Trot and Mr. Lipa and Mr. Gay for the Holiday Isles project, and Mr. Gay does not have one for the other project. So we'll start with the applicant, Ms. Cole.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. With respect to the affected parties, can we review that? Because I believe at the last hearing, the number of affected parties was adjusted because one person chose not to be an affected party and the others did not appear.
Yeah, but they still, they still have the right to be at each particular hearing. So if you want to object to any of them again at this particular hearing, is that what you're going to do? Which ones are you going to object to?
We'd object to them all again on the same basis that we've continually objected in the past.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you have to make that determination again whether or not that you want to. First of all, is Mr. Trot here? Is Mr. Lipa here? Is Mr. Gay here? Have we solved that problem? None of them are here? Okay.
That's why I wanted to ask now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Interesting that many of the public comments tonight dealt with slowing things down because you'll recall, and I went through this timeline at the Planning Commission twice, and then at the first reading of the planned development rezoning. Tonight, you're here to approve a development agreement. Last, in May, this commission approved the planned development rezoning of this property already. That went through four hearings, two before the Planning Commission, the first which was continued, the second which the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, first reading here before you, and then second reading in May. So on May 10th, this commission rezoned Mr. Holton's property at the Holiday Isles Marina to the planned development zoning category. At that meeting, the commission determined that the proposed project was both consistent with the comprehensive plan and met the criteria in the code for a planned development project. In making those findings, this commission based its decision on the competent substantial evidence that was presented by the experts, which is your obligation under the code and under state law. As part of the application process for a planned development rezoning, a site plan is required to be submitted, which my client presented to the city and had reviews. I think it's important to note that this site plan was submitted in September, and Mr. Healy recently issued a memo in response to some of Ms. Poe's comments at the last hearing, just reiterating all of the iterations and correspondence between the city and the applicant, which is quite normal in this process. When the application was submitted, there were comments about the consistency and different aspects of the plan. It went back to the applicant to make those changes, was resubmitted. You'll recall, the Planning Commission, there were specific comments by the public that what was proposed was too large in mass and scope. My client then reduced the intensity of development and the height after that and resubmitted a plan to the staff for review. So there has been probably 20 public hearings over the course of the past 12 years getting to this point. In 2005, and I went back and I was reading some newspaper articles about the adoption of the planned development category that the city adopted, there were public hearings. In 2008, between the city's own public workshops, public hearings, Pinellas Planning Council, the Countywide Planning Authority, there were 14 public hearings. In 2014, there was an additional set of three public hearings, and then since September, there have been two neighborhood meetings and four public hearings to date on this project alone. Tonight, the sole item on the agenda is the approval of a contract, a development agreement between the city and the owners of the property that will memorialize the intentions of the plan, the intentions of the planned development zoning that you've already adopted, and most importantly to the city and its residents, the obligations of the developer, the obligations to complete the project in a timely manner, the obligations to provide appropriate public facilities that connect to the project, the obligations to obtain specific permits, and the obligations for specific off-site improvements. The development agreement is reviewed consistent with the Code of Ordinances and the obligations in the code that lists the requirements of a development agreement, and those have all been met. Those are straight from your state statute, which show what is required in a development agreement, and this development agreement meets each one of those criteria. I would like to invite Cindy Terrapani with Florida Design Consultants to say a few words about the consistency, because something that I think is discussed a lot is the consistency of these projects with the city's vision. And it's important to note that the city's vision, the only way a property owner knows what the city's vision is, is to read the comprehensive plan. And your comprehensive plan and special area plan goes through very intentionally as what the expectation is on these properties and what the city's desire is to see on these properties. With that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Terrapani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Terrapani. I'm Vice President for Planning at Florida Design Consultants, and I represent Mr. Holton and his development for Holiday Isle Marina. Can I move this computer up? If I close it, will it turn off?
Ms. Marshall, is there a microphone?
It was, the problem was the computer was so close, and I was not able to get close enough to the microphone. Is that better? If I don't get blinded by the sun in this beautiful facility. Again, my name is Cindy Terrapani. I represent Mr. Holton and the Holiday Isle Marina. I'm a professional planner for over 35 years. In your previous public hearing on May 10th, you qualified me as an expert witness in the planning field, and I respectfully request that again. The project that we're discussing tonight, the Holiday Isle Marina, carries the Future Land Use Plan designation of PRMU, which stands for Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use. The site is also subject to the special area, the Town Center Special Area Plan. And then within that special area plan, there are several districts. This site is located in the Causeway character district, and the permitted uses in the order listed in the comp plan, the special area plan, are residential, temporary lodging, tourist facilities, rec open space, and preservation. This project proposes residential, temporary lodging, tourist facilities, and recreation open space, as well as preservation. The project is eligible to use the resort facility's high provision with regard to density, because it's a more than three-acre site. It's about four and a half acres. It is eligible to be developed at 125 hotel rooms per acre, a residential density at 15 units per acre, and a maximum FAR of 4.0. The project complies with all of these requirements and does not exceed them. Additionally, to use these increased density and FAR, the project must go through the PD rezoning process, which it has, and you approved on May 10th. The project must also go through the development agreement process, which it has had one public hearing, and tonight is your second hearing on that agreement. Based on this summary and my detailed planning analysis that you previously accepted at the May 10th hearing, the project Holiday Isle Marina is consistent with the city's comp plan. The project Holiday Isle Marina is consistent with the PRMU plan category. The Holiday Isle Marina is consistent with the Town Center Special Area Plan, specifically the Causeway District, its development standards, and allowable land uses. And the PD site plan and architectural plans that you approved on May 10th are attached to and made part of this development agreement such that they are binding on this developer. The rezoning for this project, as I said, has already been approved, which indicates that the project is consistent with the comp plan and with the PD requirements. Therefore, since the project has received the PD approval, the development agreement is properly before you to be approved for this project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions for the planner?
With that, I'd like to reserve any additional time to respond as rebuttal, but I would like to confirm that the commission, Mayor and Commission again accepts Ms. Terrapani as an expert. Yes. And that her report submitted May 10th is incorporated into the record with respect to the development agreement.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, it would be time for City Staff Representative, Mr. Serna, to give the city's... to give the city's staff recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Louis Serna with Calvin Giordano and Associates representing the staff. As the applicant's representatives have indicated, the board did approve the rezoning of the Holiday Isles property at their May 10th meeting. This is the second part of that. This is the agreement which establishes the rights and responsibilities of the parties to the agreement. As the applicant representative indicated, it does indicate that this will be subject to a 10-year time limit. Specific off-site improvements are detailed. They're found on Exhibit C, the final page of the development agreement. There were a number of conditions that were added, which appear on the third page of the staff report and are also incorporated into the development agreement. These are Paragraph X, dealing with additional off-site improvements. And these deal primarily with site access along 150th Avenue and deal with things such as the openings of the bridge, lobbying FDOT for a traffic signal at Madeira Cove and 150th, and specification that additional traffic signal warrant analysis will be done after the first phase of development. The Planning Commission heard this item on February 8th, and they recommended approval of the rezoning request and that the board entered into the development agreement. Their vote was seven to nothing. Based on the review, based on staff review for compliance with Article 4, Chapter 86, and with the planned development documents, and based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, staff's recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners approve and authorize execution of the development agreement for Holiday Isles Marina in support of and as a condition of approval of ordinance 2015-18.
Any questions of the commission of Mr. Serna? If not, Mr. Mayor, now would be the time for you to entertain the public's comments.
Okay, Madam Seagull.
And just a quick question. Are you going to want to, you have both? Are you going to want to speak for both?
Mr. Shaw.
Are you going to want to speak for both developments?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
It appears many of my fellow citizens are here tonight to pillory the mayor, three of the city commissioners, and the city manager, and all for doing the job, the very job that they elected him to do, and doing it too well. I refer to the commission's action in protecting the constitutional right of property owners to develop their property in according with the ordinances and zoning regulations of the city. Those objecting appear willing to ignore the fact that as residents, they had the opportunity for the past several years to petition those who represent their interests to change that which they found objectionable or felt threatened by. Unfortunately, only now that the cork is out of the bottle and they don't like the taste of the wine, are they acting. It appears they oppose the height, the density, and the fact that they feel it will destroy the small-town feeling. As to the issue of height, buildings in the proposed development conform the current codes and are consistent with the height of adjacent and surrounding buildings. When development's conformance is called into question, resulting in litigation, the courts have historically given these factors strong consideration, and I see nothing to suggest that in this case this would be any different. Regarding density, these developments are consistent with or below the level of current code, which makes them difficult to contest. As to the problem with traffic, just as was done when the school was changed and we saw hundreds of, the potential for hundreds of cars coming in and out of the city daily, all of the agents and agencies involved worked together to resolve the problem, and there's no reason to believe that this won't happen again. As to the argument this will destroy our small-town feeling, I think a dose of reality is in order. As recently as 2000, rather than being a center for charter boat sport fishing as we are today, we were a commercial fishing center, replete with all the warts and open wounds consistent with that type of operation. This resulted from our failure to attract development, signaling a lack of interest in progress, and as a result, we regressed. We found there is no such thing as status quo. We're going to move backwards or we're going to move forward. What we became, as some affectionately referred to us, was a quaint little fishing village. However, it was anything but quaint. When the boats were in, the channels were clogged with beer cans and other litter, and it was not uncommon for operators to empty holding tanks into the channel at night. The city was rampant with drug and alcohol problems, prostitution, and all the other attendant issues consisted with those things that this type of operation attracts. The city was in many ways deteriorating, which brought rents to rock-bottom lows, and this attracted even more of the undesirable element. Bars up and down the beach, like Harold's Knife and Gun Club, and the rest of them that were frequented by these people, were overtaxed, and we had a Keystone Cop Police Force for many of these years that was unable to resolve the issue. We even had a strip club on 150th. Worst of all, the situation continued our marked deterioration and since rents dropping and fueled even more of the same. I've often referred to Madeira Beach as the jewel in the necklace that is the barrier islands of Pinellas County. It is progress that brought us to this point, thanks to those who saw this as where for our community to grow. If we stop now before we've reached our full promise, we can only move backward, and I for one am not interested in becoming the Madeira Beach of the past. One other thing I'd like to remind the people who were objecting tonight. Sorry.
And I'm going to ask each person that comes up if you're going to want to speak on the other development agreement, so I know which.
I just wanted to ask. I just wanted to ask, Ken Rice, our attorney, sent a letter.
There was a question of you by the city clerk first. Do you want to speak on both agenda items?
You're going to want to speak on the other development as well?
No, just this one.
Okay.
And I can't answer any questions. You need to direct your comments to the commission.
Commission, I would ask, our attorney, Ken Rice, for Madeira Beach United, sent a letter to the city, to Mr. Trask, and I would just like to ask, he has a different opinion about our petition, and I would just like to ask that you might consider reading that into the record. You don't have to agree with it, but it is another opinion that's on the same petition. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And again, do you want to speak on both developments?
I would, yes, please, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, distinguished city employees. My name is Sean Ray. I am here on behalf of the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce. Our CEO, Robin Soli, apologizes that she could not be here tonight. She's in DC representing us and our beach communities there. The Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce represents Clearwater Beach to Terra Verde Beach and all the communities in between. The Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, with board approval as part of our community advocacy agenda, is in support of redevelopment of our densely populated beach communities, where vacant land is scarcely available. The redevelopment of blighted and underperforming properties will allow us to remain competitive in the tourism market, not only within Florida, but around the world. Newer hotels, offering larger, modern rooms and other amenities highly sought after by today's travelers, can only be made possible through new construction. In regards to the Holton Development Program, some numbers that were provided to the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce include 272 transient rooms, which at an occupancy rate of 70% would generate $1,738.35 in bed tax or tourist development tax revenue. That amounts to $634,497 a year. Parking revenue, based on 185 parking spaces at the city's hourly rate of $1.15 an hour, would generate an estimated $3,330 a day in parking revenue. According to, I'm sorry, Visit St. Pete Beach Clearwater 2014 and 2015 Fiscal Year Report, for every dollar collected in bed tax revenue, $235 of additional money is spent in Pinellas County. So with $634,000 in bed tax revenue, that would generate in excess of $149 million to additional revenue brought to Pinellas County, which directly translates to increased opportunities for our small businesses and additional opportunities to bring employment to our community. The chamber commends the city and the developer for working closely to ensure height and density regulations are met or exceeded in most occasions. This collaborative effort ensures a win-win situation for everyone involved, the city, developers, and our community. Thank you.
And are you going to?
My name is Paul Tilka.
Are you going to want to speak for both?
Probably. I don't know. It's difficult enough speaking on just one, but first off, I was involved in collecting petitions, walking the city, seeing people door-to-door and talking with them, and the eagerness of the people to get a hold of this development is paramount. And I think you really need to delay your vote or reconsider something that will help the city out, because the people of perhaps more than 100 people that my wife and I encountered, maybe two, were in favor of this massive development. Of all of the others, everybody else is in favor of some sort of redevelopment of this area. It's obvious that it needs it. It just doesn't need it to the extent that we see in what's, you know, available at this point. So I think that this committee will proceed and be successful with the petition, even though the attorneys have found certain irregularities. I think that's going to be amended shortly, and I think you're going to face the city, the voters of the city, and not, you know, it seems right now that there's a lot of outside influence coming into the city that's trying to sway your opinion. Well, I grew up in this city. Two or three weeks ago, I got a 40-year pin from the Gulf Beach Lodge. I'm being straight with you, this city does not want this excess development today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Linda Tilka, and I've lived here on Madeira Beach for 26 years. I am also a realtor. I also went around and I took a petition with me, and I spoke to everyone in this city that answered the door, and I was overwhelmed with what a lovely bunch of people we have. Most of these people, when I knocked on the door, I said, I didn't ask, I really feel bad that you even should think that we would misrepresent this petition. I said, when I went to the door, I said, we have a petition. Are you, are you a voter? They said, yes. I said, we're getting the signatures to have a voice in what you're doing with our city. And everybody said, give me the petition. They signed it. We do not want this. We don't want to live in, you know, in Clearwater. You have a beautiful city here. You have, and I love the green shirts, they're fantastic. If you want to live with vacationers, go to Clearwater, go to St. Pete Beach. Leave our city the way it is. Okay? And green, to me, is money. So I'm sure that that has a lot to do with it, too. So, so, thank you.
Shirley Nelly.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioners, and the mayor, and Shane, and lawyers, too. Good for them, because...
Did you want us to speak for both?
No, just on the Holton one, right now. So I'm going to speak about the Holton property, which obviously I have expressed myself before that I am managing the Marina and that it is coming along. I'm cleaning it up, and it's going to be nice, and you can drive through there now. In fact, you can park there this weekend, because Mr. Holton's going to donate the parking for our, whatever, we're having a barbecue thing or whatever, and so any other events. But in, having said that, I would like to say something to some of the people behind me, and they are the ones that are against it. About two weeks ago, I got an email, and I asked to come and see if I wanted to sign a petition. So I went over to the Madeira Bay Resort and went upstairs and met my neighbors and said hi to everybody, and I was very curious, you know, what's on that petition, because I can be wrong sometimes, hardly ever. But anyway, so I went in there, and I started reading the petition, and I saw where it said at the 2005, it was at 2009, and I said, well, that's wrong. So anyway, I was sitting at the front of the desk, and everybody was around, there's about 15 people, and all of a sudden, this person, I will not name his name, but the people that were there will witness it for me, came out and told me to get out of there. So, thank God you guys don't let people do that in here tonight. I didn't get up and tell them to get out, because I wanted to, I don't agree with them. But anyway, I was told to get out. Not only was I told to get out four or five times by the same person, which I tried to be dignit, and I said, I'm just going to see what it's about, I was, they called, he called the police on me. So then I decided, well, maybe I should go ahead and leave, and I went down and I met the police officer downstairs. I said, you don't need to arrest me. I just went to something I was invited to. So I think the neighbors and the people around us have gotten out of control, and it's kind of, it's kind of crazy. Some of them were there, they saw...
Excuse me, everybody's due passion.
You think that's funny? You get thrown out of a meeting tonight. Why don't you get the officers to get them out of here? So anyway, yeah.
Deputy.
So anyway, having said that, I just wanted to let you know that maybe everything you read and everything that was passed around to the neighbors is not right. That's all I want to say.
And I apologize if I don't say anybody's name correctly. Frank Di Benedetto?
You're good.
Oh, all right. And you're with the Holton only, you put both?
My name is Frank Di Benedetto, and I live at 726 Sunset Cove. And I want to compliment the commission and Shane and everybody, but the truth is, you know, we have a beautiful city, and you're right. It's a paradise, it's a pearl, it's anything you want to call it. But if you go up to Clearwater, and it is growing and it is developed, their problem is, is that their development has not taken into consideration everything that this commission has done. They have buildings that are on the sidewalk, and yes, we may have one now and then. They just built a skyscraper there that's on this, right on the sidewalk next to Shepherd's. They just tore down a bunch of buildings, because they realized one problem, there's no parking. So when we look at our town, and we are trying to develop both the Holton project and another project, and you're grunting because you don't want it too high, if you look out to the right, there's buildings that are skyscrapers, are tall, 10, 12 stories, and the key would be, in my opinion, is to stop limiting the height but put more parking, because if the customers and the people that come here, like the people that are objecting to this, I'm sure have traveled around the world, they get to another paradise, they enjoy it, then they do come home. I would like to see the people come here, park their cars, stay for the day or the weekend, spend their money. And people that work in restaurants are not low-wage, minimum-income people. And I work for somewhere around 4,000 restaurants, and I think you would insult any of the management people, telling them that you're paying people minimum wage. They all make a good living, the waitresses work hard, and maybe the base wage is a minimum, but they make a large pay, they work hard, and they support their families. Between the two different developments, you're talking in excess of $25 to $35 million coming into the town in revenue. I'd like the people to come and stay, not go through like Clearwater. You drive in, you can't find a parking spot, you're stuck in traffic for hours, you're stuck on a bridge for hours. If we develop it... If we develop it and we protect the people to have, to room, to park, I think they would have something to go for. I happen to be lucky enough, I've been here since 1995. I've got four generations living in five different houses on the water. I pay a lot of taxes, and I'd like to see the town continue to develop. The little, small town of Madeira Beach has kind of grown into a metropolis. We are big, and we need to continue to protect it. Last month, somebody made a comment, there was a staggering amount of accidents on 150th. But if you ask the officers, the accidents were not because of the condos coming in and out, a majority of them were because of the bridge and/or the schools or McDonald's on the other side. So, you know, numbers can lie, and lawyers can figure out numbers. The whole thing is, is that we're fighting a dead issue. We need to move forward in the 21st century. And I thank you.
And you indicated both, correct?
Yes, twice. No time for thank you, so I'm going right in. This is the fourth, but not the last time that I'll be addressing a Commission of this city on this, on these projects. Up front, I'd like to say, I would like you to vote yes and approve this agreement. Holiday Al Marina is a beautiful addition to the gateway of, to our city. It's a vast improvement to the existing empty lot. Plus, it gives us another restaurant to visit by boat. I am not impressed with the position, with the petition that was presented, even if it were truthfully worded, since only 1,025 residents signed it out of about 4,200 residents that I understand live here. That's less than 25 percent. I understand this property is not being developed to the fullest extent allowed, and earlier you were asked to slow down. But here's my fear. I fear that if this vote fails, Mr. Holden will throw up his hands, abandon his grand plans, and sell to a developer who will come in and build this property out to the max. And I don't think we want to see that. Thank you.
I'm really not enthralled with the sound of my own voice. I didn't intend to speak when I moved here thirty years ago, but we found this place and we love this place, and we've, we've seen the development that has accelerated in the last five years. And if anyone thinks that that is detrimental, I'm afraid they don't have very good vision. I'm a little old, but my vision is still 20/20. I can still hear, and I still have most of my teeth. As regards to these two projects, I think it is progress. And if you have a city without progress, it's going to die. When I made my first couple of speeches, I pointed out that we had lived in many places in the country and in Europe, and we have seen towns, cities, major cities and portions of them die for lack of funds, for lack of development, for lack of progress. So tonight, what we have seen is we've seen all the people who don't want any change whatsoever. They may say that they would like responsible development, but they don't define what responsible development is. So I'll define it for them. It's what they want versus what they don't want. And that's, that's human nature. We have people who want change, we have people who don't want change, and it will ever be thus. However, if you don't change, our little city will die. And we have seen little cities die all over the country, the East Coast, the Rust Belt in the middle, and even in wonderful California where we lived for three times. So we are for progress, and we are for love over hate, and we don't make personal judgments against those who have a sincere opinion in the other direction. However, we don't believe it is right for them to dictate to anyone else either. It's, we are a city, and we all ought to be proud of what we do and what has been done by this group here. I've, I've been invited to attend meetings since, since we moved here. I was even invited once to get on the Planning Council, but, or at least Trifort, but I was smarter than that because I don't want to work that hard. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mr. Noran, did you want to speak again?
Yes, probably.
Really hard to follow that. Once again, my name is Jeff Brown. I own property at 201-150th Avenue. I have a business there. I also reside in Madeira Beach, and I've been fortunate enough to be on the Zoning and Planning Commission with some of my other fellow citizens for the last three years. I just keep hearing the overall, "We don't want Clearwater Beach here." And I can't keep saying enough, I don't want Clearwater Beach here either. I, I keep hearing that zoning and planning and the Commissioners aren't listening, yet when we do get a, a height brought down, when we do get densities brought down, it just seems it's just never enough. We are listening. We have brought the heights down. We have brought the densities down, and we do not want a Clearwater Beach here area or either. Read, look, educate yourself. The post office is going nowhere. You don't have to go to Seminole. It's gonna be right here, folks. And just to think that we're against somebody like Mr. Holden taking his property and developing it in a very responsible way. We came in under density, under height on everything, and he, and the people still wanted reductions. Mr. Holden heard that and wholeheartedly brought those reductions in. So for those of you saying, "We don't listen," we do listen. I've worked on this Commission for the last three years. I've put hours in, hours, hours I should have been doing my business. I was worried about the city's business because I love this town. And for the naysayers to keep coming up and saying the same old things, we are listening. I'm sorry, we're not, we can't listen to the amount you want us to, but we have a playbook handed to us by these individuals. It's our job to make sure that these plans, these construction sites, fall into the playbook that you guys gave us. It's not for us to say yes or no, it's for us to make the changes, make it right, and get it to you for you to say yes or no for. So I ask this evening to let everyone know, we are listening. We all love this town. And I pray that when this is all over, whichever way the cards fall, that we can come together again and stop this division in our community.
Mr. Brown, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I did.
And I'm gonna ask first, are you gonna want to speak for both?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Gay Prince. The Tampa Bay Times, Friday, May 17th, 2013, "Opponents of Madeira Beach Recreation Complex Want Referendum," by Sheila Mullane Estrada. So there was a letter and petition calling for a referendum, and the city attorney, Tom Trask, returned the package after discovering several deficiencies. The most important thing is at the bottom where it quotes our city manager, Mr. Shane Crawford, and it says, "But if they can get eight hundred to nine hundred signatures," which is probably more than have voted in most elections, "the issue certainly needs to go to referendum," Crawford said Friday. All the people are asking, and there's, was only 2,800 registered voters, and I can tell you that, as a matter of fact, in one house, only one person still lived there. One was deceased, others had moved out of the home. Out of 2,800 registered voters, over 1,047, if I'm, if I heard correctly, signed the petition. The petition is only asking for a voice for those people. Under the City Charter, Madeira Beach, Florida City Charter, 13.2 section, it says, "Any five electors may commence initiative or referendum proceedings by filing with the city clerk an affidavit stating they will constitute the petitioner's committee." It doesn't say that they will also be constituting the circulators. Under 13.3C, it says, "Affidavit of Circulator. Each paper of a petition shall have attached to it when filed," which it did, "an affidavit executed by the circulator thereof stating that he personally circulated the paper, the number of signatures thereon, and that all the signatures were affixed in his presence, and he believes them to be the genuine signature of the persons whose name they purport to be, and that each signer is an elector of the city and had an opportunity before signing to read the full text of the ordinance proposed or sought to be reconsidered." The petitioner's committee put the binders together, and it not only had the petition with the wording, it also had Ordinance 2014-08 behind it for anybody who wanted to read it and that was asked to read it, which it was right there in all the binders. Did you take out a second chance to talk? Slowly. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. City Manager. I, I've been developing in this city for a number of years. I have, my family has ownership in four businesses here. I would say that the impact fees and permit fees and things that I've paid help pay for a significant portion of, of your facilities here and other things in the city. I, I very much enjoy working in your city. I'm very happy to have a, a voice here to speak, to, to help support these developments. I've worked in many cities on the beaches. This is the best one I've ever worked in with regard to making sure that you look after our properties and our, you know, the developments we're doing here. I, I wonder, I've worked in other cities where groups like this have stopped developments. And those cities are dying, like the Speedy said earlier. Death in the cities are not pleasant for the citizens. Their property taxes increase dramatically. I know another city on the beach here where they're not able to buy a new garbage truck they need because they have squelched development. The income from those developments and the bed taxes and all those things aren't coming anymore. So they, they don't, may not think about all those things that come along, you know, and help them in ways that they don't understand. I wholeheartedly support Mr. Holden's project, and I hope you vote to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Did you want to speak again, Mr. Lyons? Did you want to speak again?
I'm Phil Reagan, live on East Parsley, and I just believe in a voice in the government. And I did take the person, petitions around, and I met Nancy, who was very kind to me. I didn't go over and tell the people that, that we just wanted to, to read about the, the petition or the ordinances. This is what I told them. I said, "And the property downtown," I read to them, "Eight stories, eight stories, eleven stories, eleven stories." This property, I read, "Eight stories, eight stories, ten stories, eight stories." They said, "What do I sign?" There were age groups, from young people all the way to elderly like myself. So well over a hundred people signed petitions that I put out. That's just information that you should know. Even though this was insufficient, they were saying no to the big heights and the density. That's what they were saying. So when you make your votes this evening, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Reagan, did you want to speak again?
No.
Robert Klinger? Kling? Kling? Kling something?
I'm Rob Klingel. As a matter of fact, that was brought up right across the street over here in the greenhouse when this was a sand park. Anyway, it's been a long time, and I've noticed this, noticed all the rift going on around in the neighborhood and between the city, the developers, the citizens, and they all had their points. They all had their, their say. I always was told to find the information and try to verify it. So what I did, I went out and hired a company called ThinkSpot. They're out of Tallahassee. They recommended to me by a representative of our Congress. And I said, "I don't, I just want you to look at all the data that the city's been very good to give to me, and to see if there's any red flags, large red flags." And that's what they did. They wrote and came up with six different things. The guy is Charles Geitner. He's a very... And the other one was Dr. Bliss. He was supposed to be here today, but I guess he thought he was gonna hear about you guys, so he got a heart attack and couldn't come. So he couldn't make it. So he got me, who hires the experts to do the work to try to explain this to you. But there are six items on here. I, whether you see there's a red flag, it's for anybody to look at. I've got 200 copies here that I like to give out to the residents and anybody here who wants to have them to, to see what they came up with. You make your own opinion by looking at it, whether it's a, these are red flags, non-red flags. I'm not gonna say, I'm gonna be neutral, okay? And one for mice, and I'll, if you want, I can give you one now. Can I hand them to you?
Give them to the Saicler.
Okay, I'll give it to her. But wish you all the best, everybody. Thank you.
I'm thinking not. Did you? No? You don't want to speak again?
Already here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Jim Scarborough, and I'm here to speak tonight about the proposed Madeira Beach Town Center rezoning and development agreement. Beach Town Center rezoning and development agreement, as well as the Holiday Isles Marina Development Agreement, all of which are scheduled for consideration and vote on today's agenda. Due to the three-minute time limit, I won't spend my time on a lengthy introduction of who I am, other than to say that I grew up here on the beach, attended Madeira Beach Junior High School, Seminole High School. I'm a cum laude graduate of Stetson University College of Law, and I'm a retired real estate developer's attorney. I'd like to confine my remarks, though, to the referendum petition, which was filed with the city last week, as it affects any actions that the commission may take today. With due respect to the city attorney, I believe that he has misread the provisions of the charter with regard to the effect of the filing of the petition. The city charter is very clear as the effect of a referendum petition, and it provides that filing shall consist of delivery of the petition to the circle of court. Clerk, CD clerk, excuse me. This was done last week. It goes on to provide that when the referendum petition is filed with the city clerk, the ordinance sought to be reconsidered shall be suspended from taking effect. The suspension remains in effect until the city commission either repeals the ordinance or makes a final determination that the petition is insufficient. And this is a legal term, and it is a legal requirement. It's a procedure that's absolutely spelled out in the charter. The procedure for making the final determination as the sufficiency or the insufficiency of the petition is lengthy and it's detailed. The clerk's certificate of insufficiency is only a preliminary step that puts the petitioner's committee on notice of potential alleged defects in the petition. That triggers a time period for them to supplement the petition and to circulate, obtain additional signatures as needed. There's quite a few procedures that are spelled out in there. But it's clear that it's only the final decision by the city council, the final determination by the city council that would lift that suspension. So the suspension remains in effect until the city commission either repeals the ordinance or makes a final determination that the petition is insufficient. The procedure for making the final determination is lengthy. If the commission determines that the petition is sufficient. I'm sorry. Three minutes just isn't long enough. I'm very sorry. But in short, what I'd just like to say is that the Board of Commissioners has no discretion in the way that it handles the referendum petition. It's limited to the actions that are specified in the charter. I think there's little chance that the petitioner's are going to give up on the petition. And based on the support that it has with the voters, it seems almost inevitable that the ordinance in its current form is going to be repealed or revised, one way or another, either through commission action or voter referendum. It doesn't seem to be in the city's best interest to obstruct this effort. A far better procedure would be to postpone consideration of this. Try to get the people involved. That's what everyone.
Been over about 60 seconds.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Slide to about that of everybody.
Mr. Scarborough, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I'll speak again.
Janet Melia.
Good evening, everybody. Let me start out by saying I'm not a lawyer. I see a lot of lawyers come up here and speak a lot of legalese at us. I'm an engineer by trade. I deal in numbers. And I was one of the 1,025 people that signed that petition. I don't believe I was misled because he showed up at my door and he said, "I have a petition." I said, "Where do I sign?" I've heard all about it. I followed it. Unfortunately, you did catch me sleeping. I've only followed it for the last three or four months. But to me, what this says as an engineer who deals with numbers is that you've got a substantial percentage of your population that is interested in this issue and at least wants to be able to see it on a ballot. It does two things for us. One, it allows those people who just don't happen to be here in the middle of summer when we're circulating that petition that must be signed in person to be represented. Most of my neighbors are not here right now. I know all of them attended a meeting with me back in April and would have signed the petition had they been here. So it does allow them to be able to send in an absentee ballot if they're not here. The second thing it does for us is it allows us to not have to worry about these little legalese things in the petition that most of us, I took one civics class, I was in eighth grade. I attended it maybe one day a week. Wasn't really anything I was interested in. We don't care about the legalese. We know that what you're doing is something that we should all at least get to have a say in, and that's not the way we feel. We finally got a petition going. We had a vast number of people sign that petition, only to have you throw it out based on some legalese that none of us understand or really care to understand. So put it on the ballot, unless you're afraid that it will come out the way you don't want it to come out, and let the voters decide whether they want it to be scaled back or whether they want it to go ahead as planned. I agree with everybody else who's come up here and said, "Go ahead and do the development. We need development." But I don't want that many people right in my little area here. Thank you for your time.
Janet, did you want to speak again?
No.
Jim Evert.
Are we having fun yet? My name is Jim Evert, 15458 First Street East. I too am a member of the planning board. I chair the planning board and have served on it in my sixth year. And that's about how long we've been working on this. So I love the people that show up in the ninth inning and say, "We didn't know anything about it." But anyway, let me just paint a picture for you. You go to referendum, you eliminate the PD. I can tell you how that works out. Look south of the bridge at the city of Treasure Island. Name the new construction that's occurred in TI in the last 10 years. The one hotel's gone up, only because that's a huge piece of property, and he was able to go wall-to-wall. He wanted to go seven stories over, excuse me, seven stories over parking. The ordinance only allows him to go five over parking. They have no PD capability. They're struggling. They're a city that's a third larger than we are. They can't pay for the maintenance on their bridge. They're going to have to put the toll back on it. They're considering an increase in the millage rate. There's no new construction going on. HCI owns that property on the north end that looks like the demilitarized zone. They don't want to develop it under the current code, but they voted in the mid-2000s to eliminate the PD and only go five over parking. And now look at them. So now you know what they're doing? The city commission is struggling to get a PD back on the ballot in certain zones, very similar to what we've already done here in these two development projects, because they need the development, they need the revenue, or the residents are going to face an increased millage rate, and their millage rate's already higher than ours is. And they've got over 6,000 residents in that town. So if you want to look at what happens, all the arguments over the petition and not the petition, and let's go to vote on it, they did that in the mid-2000s. And take a look at Treasure Island, and you'll see exactly what will happen here. Thank you.
Mr. Evert, did you want to speak again?
Yes, ma'am.
Rick Cowley.
Good evening, Pastor. Good evening. Mayor and city commissioners and staff. I represent or speak for more than 200 people who are in this town every single week. We, most of us probably are non-voters. I didn't wear my green shirt, but I didn't know that it was going to reflect that I was in it for the money, so I'm glad I didn't wear my green shirt. But I want you to know that I encourage you to support this, both of these items. We personally, most everyone who has spoken somewhere along the way says, "I don't want" or "I do want." Let me just agree with them. This is personal. I want. I want our town to reach the world, and we want to be a part of it. And we see on a weekly basis an increasing number of people from around the world who find out about Madeira Beach because of the new developments, because of the things that you are doing that are incredibly insightful. And just as a group of people who share that vision with you, we just encourage you. Every one of us is going to at some point say, "This is personal. I'm just explaining this is personal to us. We want to join your vision in reaching around the world, and we think that's helpful." Thank you very much.
Did you want to speak again?
Let me reserve that right.
I don't have a reserved pile. I got too many already. No?
Yes.
Steve Miller.
Steve Miller, live on Harbor Drive. Lived there for over 30 years. I'm going to beat to that horse again. It does not comply with either the comprehensive plan or the special area plan. It clearly states there that the fundamental goal of those plans is to ensure that the residential family and beach character community of the city of Madeira Beach is maintained and protected. And it also says later on that encouraging an orderly and aesthetic mix of land uses by allowing new development, redevelopment, that will enhance and protect the city's existing character. You do not put 700 new hotel rooms into a city of our size and maintain the city's character. It changes the city's character. All right? If you wish to change the city's character, go to the comprehensive plan, amend it, and say, "We want to become a tourist attraction for the world, and maybe a little residential in the, you know, somehow we'll, we'll, we'll live with that, live with the residential. But we really want to be a tourist attraction." That's what our number one goal of as a city is to be a tourist attraction. Well, change these plans and tell us that. Come out and be straightforward and tell us that. Until you do, you're bound to follow this plan. This was voted on. It is a formal legal document. All the other boilerplate beyond that is supposed to implement this, and it does not. You have not implemented that way. We're talking about the numbers on the petition. Mr. Hodges, 244 people in your district signed those petitions. You only have 740 registered voters. Commissioner Lister, 226 signed it. Commissioner Shantz, 206 signed it. And we didn't ask a lot of people because we don't go around that end of the vote. It's just ridiculous. And actually, in other cities, we had, this is a very high barrier to get 25% of the voters to sign this. In Treasure Island, it's 10%. To amend the city charter, it's 10%. In Clearwater, it's 10%. In St. Petersburg, it's 10%. In any new city that is chartered in the state of Florida, I think it's held to 10%. Somehow, we got 25%. And maybe one of the first things we do after this is get a petition up to reduce that down to 10%. Because at a 25% level, we're trusting you people way too much to just pass anything you want to, and especially if you get legal advice, as such as you're getting, which it clearly stated in the ordinance that added, the PD zoning was added to the list of districts. It was added to the list of districts. If somebody went and looked at the, looked at the ordinances, they would not see a listing for PD. Now, there's boilerplate stuff that was cut and paste down there about PD somewhere in the charter, somewhere in the ordinances, but it wasn't linked to anything. It was just sitting there. So you basically, if you use the PD, you use it illegally. And it's not just, it's not cosmetic. It's not housekeeping. It's by the book. Thank you.
Are you in this pile? Did you put? Hang on. Mr. Miller, did you want to speak again?
I'm sure if I would.
Okay. You're down here. You're up here. One, two, three, four. How does the commission want to proceed? She's asking for me to go ahead of the other five people.
What? I can't allow that. It's got to go in a room. All right.
Rick Chapman.
I'm Rick Chapman. Live on Gulf Boulevard. You know, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of the discussion tonight, you spoke of the need for all of us to have respect for one another. And that's, I'm glad you said that. That's really important. And you know, in a chamber like this, I can't think of anything that's more important than respecting the will of the voters. And I think that's what these people here are talking about tonight. You know, one thing I do have to say to really commend you and commend the developer, or developers, I should say, is you've had a series of hearings to talk about this. They probably haven't turned out exactly as you or he may have expected them to, or they may have expected them to. But you have had that series of hearings, and it strikes me that in that series of hearings, what's happened is there's been an ever-increasing chorus of no's about this project. And I want to be really clear, because those no's aren't no's to development. Somehow, this is being framed that way, that you either accept and endorse these projects at this scale, or you're against development and you want the city to die. That's absolutely untrue. What the voters are saying, what your constituents are saying, is this, or these particular projects on these particular scales are more than we want to see. People want to see the redevelopment of the city. People want to see investment in the city. People want to see growth in the city. But this is too much, too large, too fast, and too small of an area. Now, you know, one of the things that's been talked about also tonight quite a bit is the petition. And I've listened to that, and, you know, I listened to the explanation from Mr. Trask, and I'm sure he's well-intentioned, very knowledgeable. In fact, I'd put on the table, he's probably right in everything that he's saying. I'm not going to get into a contest of parsing words or phrases with him. But any reasonable person knows what those people that signed that petition wanted, regardless of the legal position that can be taken if you choose to avail yourself of it. You know in your hearts what your constituents wanted, what your constituents are asking you to do. The only question is whether you're going to listen to your constituents. Now, a few minutes ago, one of the speakers used the phrase, he said, "Now people are objecting to this when the cork's out of the bottle." You know what? The cork's not out of the bottle yet, for a little while longer. It's not out of the bottle until you guys vote. And the only question is whether, in doing that, when you search your heart, whether you're going to listen to the people that put you in those seats. And that's the question you have to answer. Thank you.
Mr. Chapman, did you want to speak again?
No, I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay. Eric Audit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, staff. I wanted to make an observation. My wife and I recently purchased a business here in Madeira Beach, and she's grown up here. We've lived here for several years. And so what we decided to do was find some old photographs and things like that for our business, you know, so we could put up and see the nostalgic Madeira Beach. The photographs that we found of 150th were 50 years old. The same properties are there 50 years later. So what was quaint in that postcard that we found 50 years ago isn't quaint anymore. Okay? We've decided to invest our money into this community because of the growth that we see in the community, and...
in the community, and frankly, how, when money has loosened up, the developers are coming in, and they're actually doing a responsible job. They wouldn't be doing that if you folks didn't approve that. And I want to see the continued growth here. I think that it's amazing. I think that all this discussion helps, and I think that if ordinances are obeyed and laws are obeyed, and, you know, and it's done right, and this is not the first meeting, this is not the second meeting, everybody has been privy to everything here for years, that's, you know, for this development. So I just think that for the people that don't want the development, or don't want, or want to slow it down, take a look at One Hundred and Fiftieth. Fifty years, the same buildings, the same look. It just, it's time. It's time for, it's time for change. And that change is positive, and I hope you all, and I'm talking to the people behind me, can embrace it. And you guys are doing a great job. I think that you're going to do what's right, you're going to do what's fair, and you're going to do it to the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Audit, did you want to speak again? That was, that was a no. Nancy Chapman? So, that's it, okay. Dennis Fagan?
And I'll spare you the agony of listening to me twice. I'll speak about both projects. I'm Dennis Fagan. I'm the chairman of the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce, and it should come as no surprise that the chamber supports both of these projects. They'll increase tourism and bring much-needed amenities to the community. Madeira Beach and its residents have a very unique opportunity in front of them. You have two ready, willing, and able developers that are ready to move forward. And these aren't foreign investors. They're not outsiders. They're not folks that are coming into the neighborhood, buying property, putting up a building, and then leaving town. They're here to stay. They've been here for decades. They've raised their families here. They've invested heavily into this, into this community. That's a very unique opportunity. They want their names associated with quality development. Development that they can be proud of, that their family, their friends, and their residents can also be proud of. And I said that this is a unique opportunity. One thing that I learned about opportunity is you need to take advantage of the opportunity of a lifetime during the lifetime of that opportunity. And that time is now. I urge you to move forward.
Evelyn Page?
Mayor, and Commissioners, Attorneys, I've been a developer on this beach for approximately twenty-five years, and this is one of the best places where we've ever developed. I can tell you that. We did the Marriott Hotel. Your hotels were gone, devastated, when the slump came and all the hotels left. Then, we built Beach Club of Madeira, where I live now, a beautiful condominium, where we had an old junky hotel, motel, if you remember it. We even had the, when it rained, it was so bad that in one unit, the roof fell on a bed, if you can believe. So, but we got rid of that blight. You have more blight in this town. These people here are willing to spend multi-million dollars in this town, just as we did. We spent fifteen million on that condo, twenty-five some million on our hotel. Hasn't it been a great asset?
Yes.
Isn't it fabulous?
Yes.
All right. This, these two gentlemen, I've looked at their property, and both of them have fabulous ideas what to do. It's a big mistake, I'm telling you. Big mistake if you don't approve this wholeheartedly. The people who will oppose us the most will be bragging the most when the job is done and thanking you. When we came here and wanted to build something, your council was in terrible disarray, till this fabulous man, our, your mayor, came in and gave us the permit. We'd been trying for a year. This place was dizzy. It was over at the other building. They didn't know what they were doing. It was in crisis. He's pulled it out. He's done a fabulous job, and will continue to do so with your support. Thank you.
Did you want to speak again?
Please.
Did you want to speak again?
You want to hear some more?
Yeah. And you are a resident of Madeira Beach, aren't you?
I'm telling you, you got blight here. You need to get rid of it. Or some of these people are, don't want to live.
John Hendricks?
John Hendricks, Normandy Road. I've been here thirty years. I looked around at a lot of beach communities before I bought here. But I guess I bought here for a different reason than everybody else. I bought, I bought here because Madeira Beach was blighted, and it was rundown, and the house here was all I could afford. And truth be known, that's why a lot of folks bought here, because our property values were depressed. I can remember when Savoy Lounge was on the corner. That place had bullet holes in the ceiling. People were afraid to come to Madeira Beach. It's, I've waited thirty years to see this town start getting developed. A lot of people are complaining about the traffic. Those people that are complaining about the traffic, where were they when Reddington was being developed? Not a word. Where were they when Treasure Island's being developed? Not a word. Where will they be when the Gators property is developed? Probably not a word. Where were they when the new Walmart was being developed? Not a word. All these beach communities exit on Tom Stewart Causeway. The traffic isn't caused by the residents of Madeira Beach. The traffic's being caused by everyone else coming through this way, bypassing our, what little business we have here, and going elsewhere, going to work, going to dinner, going shopping. It's Madeira Beach's time, and you need to approve this development. I'm glad to see it coming. Madeira Beach citizens deserve it, and quite frankly, it'll be nice to be in an area that I can go to a restaurant here, or a shop here, and spend my money here instead of having to go out of town to do it. Our time is now. We need the development. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks, did you want to speak again? Jeremy Runo?
Hi, my name's Jeremy Runo, and my wife and I own the Dacre Shack in Madeira Beach, 14995 Gulf Boulevard. We've had it for almost fifteen years. And as business owners in Madeira Beach, we appreciate the pro-business direction that you guys have taken over the past few years. And with that, also as business owners currently, we also are a hundred percent behind both developments that are on the table for tonight to be voted on, and hope you guys make the right decision. Thanks.
Mr. Runo, did you want to speak again?
Yes.
Jeff Beggins?
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Beggins, Century Twenty-One here, 14995 Gulf. I won't say too much, because I think a lot's been said already, but I want to kind of take some issue with some of the attacks going this way towards you guys. I think a lot of people forget the process that both of these developers have gone through to get to this point. And all of the meetings, and all the community meetings, and all the planning and zoning hearings, and all the readings, and all the comments back and forth, and I think a lot of the people that are against us forget the fact that the developers were beat up quite a bit. You know, they could do twice, almost twice, what they're proposing to do right now with the development agreements. Twice the height. They can go higher, they can go higher density, but they're not. And a lot of it's because you, as a commissioner of the Planning and Zoning Board and the community, gave the feedback back. So I think we should all recognize the fact that we've got a hell of a commission and planning board, and local developers that actually care about the continuity of this town, and they're going to make it look beautiful. So I hope you guys do the right thing, and say yes, and let's get the city moving. Thank you.
Mr. Beggins, did you want to speak again? Cassandra Tudaro? Did I do okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to make this brief, because everyone has mostly spoken for or against the density, the scope of the project. I just want to say that if you look at those buildings along the street, and part of the problem is that street, because the bridge goes up on that street, and naturally, you're going to get a lot of traffic, and that's concerning a lot of people, how you're going to ameliorate that traffic problem. As far as the development goes, I think we need a development. Those buildings are pretty shabby-looking, and, but we don't want to replace shabby with another thing that's going to be an eyesore. For the, for the height of it, I live right in Madeira Beach Yacht Club. It's not going to affect my view. My view is of the ugliest fireplace in the country. I don't hope that architect, but he ought to give you your money back, because it's pretty ugly. But that's neither here nor there. I think people are afraid. Change makes people fearful. What I'm afraid of is the scope of this project, both of these projects, how long it's going to tie up that street. I can't wait for them to be done. So I'm hoping that when they set a timeline, we're not going to be here for five or ten years with the traffic on that street, along with all the construction vehicles. And I am glad that we are going to have revenue coming in, and millions of dollars were mentioned for the city. You have to remember that these developers are going to be making ten times that. So of course, they're going to be for this development. So I don't envy the decision that you have to make, because there's people for, there's people for against, and they all have valid reasons for their opinion. So, and also, I would like to say, I hope that you eliminate the cross over, going over the Gulf Boulevard. I don't want it to be an eyesore coming over there. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Did you want to speak again? Randy Kerschner?
Randy Kerschner, 220 One Hundred and Forty-Fourth Avenue. I'm against the projects. They're just way, way too humongous. They do not fit in the spirit of the neighborhood. And I'm also sad, all the developers, all I keep hearing is about, oh, the money, oh, the money. Does anybody care about the quality of life of the people that live here? Also, the commission, I'm suspicious that you were leaning towards the developers, and I'll tell you why. The first time we were going to address this issue was a packed house, TV cameras here and everything. Last moment, must have been too much action, you could, out of clear blue, cancel it. I talked to two couples, two separate couples, one from Connecticut outside. That would be the only time that they were going to be able to speak at the meeting, because they were going back north. So they got snubbed out. Okay, I came back to the next meeting. We brought it up for the agenda. We had a long, long display of the project, this and that. That was okay. That was long enough, I understand. Then, we had another hour demonstration about traffic from the condo onto One Hundred and Fiftieth. Well, it was dark by then. There were a lot of people here. There was an old couple in front of me. They said it was well orchestrated. They can't drive at night, or maybe they have to go to the bathroom. They couldn't stay to speak anymore. It seems now, tonight, you have a petition with twelve hundred voters. None of you got twelve hundred votes when you got elected to office, yet you seem to just want to discount it. You don't seem to want to listen to the people. This is a democracy. Listen to the people, put it up for a vote, instead of just ignoring all of us like we don't exist. Not all of us are worried about the money. They talk about the taxes. You double my storm fee. That's triple what my property taxes are. So you say you want tax money, and you just add the money to the storm fee. So, I think, the project is disastrous, way too big. The traffic over the bridge will be horrendous. The people that live in those condos, if they ever get built, lord knows how they're going to get out of there. If there's ever an emergency at those condos when the bridge is up, they're going to wait twenty minutes to get an ambulance in there. So I'm strongly opposed to it. I thank you for your time.
Did you want to speak again?
I'll reserve the right.
Heidi Goldberg?
Hello, Mayor. I would like to say that this town now, we have the city hall, we have Rock Park. When you come over the bridge, we have the disgusting One Hundred and Fiftieth Street. The projects that have been presented, and I've been to every meeting, are absolutely fabulous and amazing. There is nothing that is not going to improve the city immensely. They talked about parking. Mr. Kearns made more than ample parking spots for people who want to shop, spend money downtown. The entire two, first two floors of Mr. Kearns's project were absolutely amazing, and were only for the people that were in the city. Yes, we're having a hotel, but we had the Holiday Inn. The Holiday Inn was a dump, and we still got revenue from that. His hotel is amazing. The projects for the condominiums and the marina, unbelievably beautiful. There, there's no view that's going to be blocked. What are we going to block? We're going to block the purple haze? Get rid of it. It's all disgusting. We want this city to be beautiful, and it was beautiful by building the city hall, building Rock Park, and why not continue with the condominiums and the hotel? The people that are opposing it don't realize, if downtown St. Pete felt like that, there wouldn't have been a $6.9 million condo that just sold, the highest condo in Pinellas County. Those, those were, that was disgusting down there. I've lived here for twenty-eight years. Downtown St. Pete is where everyone wants to go now. We're just building to make this beautiful and not look like a dump. So I don't see any downside, and I want you guys to vote yes for everything, and I think that the two developers have done an amazing job, and have put in tons of time and effort to make this, so that the people in the community would be proud to have this here. And I also think that you, Mayor, have done an amazing job, and I think Mr. Crawford has really put a tremendous amount of time and effort into making this a better place for everybody who's in Madeira Beach. for everybody who's in Madeira Beach. Thank you, and please vote yes.
Did you want to speak again? Did you want to speak?
Oh, yes.
Yes? That's the last card unless I, oh, never mind. Hooch? Gold, I don't know how you say your last name, I'm sorry.
Goi.
What is it? How do you say your last name?
Not my last name.
I know it when you say it, but I don't think I...
Good evening. My name is Hooch Kovahy. I'm a resident of Madeira Beach, the most beautiful town I've ever lived. And I've lived in Pinellas County for 37 years. I just love this town. No matter where I go, I miss it. I also want to say that I'm in the world of engineering, and I deal with a lot of mayors and commissioners and council and so forth and so on, and I really, and city managers. And I want to say that this town really has it together. You guys are doing a wonderful job. And what you're doing tonight with your decision is not an easy one. It is a tough one. You know, you're trying to please everybody, but that's really hard to do. Now, everybody that's here tonight, they love this city, everybody. They're all passionate. They all want this town to be a good town, a better town. We all want it to be a good town, but of course there are differences of opinions. You know, we can't bring all the opinions together, but we can be objective, and that's a good thing. And at the end of the day, we have to make a good decision. And that is up to you tonight, and it's a tough one. I have to give it to you. Now, I have also served on Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce, and I'm not here tonight on their behalf, I'm here on my own. But I've been the president there twice, and currently I serve on tourism board, and I go to TDC sometimes, and then the mayor is a part of that TDC, is a member of that Florida pumps in about $80 billion worth of tourism dollars, and Pinellas County, 10% of that, which is $8 billion. So $8 billion of tourism money comes to Pinellas County. Wouldn't it be nice to get some of that money? Wouldn't it be nice to bring some of those dollars to this town so we won't have to increase our taxes? So we can enjoy the quality of life that we're accustomed to? I really don't want to have to give any more taxes, you know? So also, please consider that development is cyclical. You know, we've gone through downturn with this economy for a long, long time. Now is a good time to move forward because if we miss this opportunity, the next cycle may be another five, six, seven, 10 years. Now, talking about Mr. Holton's property, you know, he would have to spend, I don't know, $150 million to get this project, and it's a pretty big risk. You have to be really on the development side to see what it takes to bring those developments to this town. You know, this is just a beginning of it. Drawing plans and going through this system is just the beginning. And to appease the other business owners to come into this town, whether there are restaurants or whether there are tourism or whatever it is, it's act of God, you know? This is just the beginning. He's got a lot of work to do. I wish I could talk more. Thank you.
Does that mean you want to speak again? Yes? I think that's it.
All right. Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so now would be the opportunity for Ms. Cole or her client to provide rebuttal witnesses, and if not, make a summary of where they're at, and then the city will summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. A couple of housekeeping items. I wanted, I saw that Mr. Lippa's testimony was, written testimony was included in the staff report, and I'd respectfully request that it be stricken as a specific addendum to the staff report as he was not present to cross-examine or to speak about his report and was not...
It's not part of the staff report.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just in the packet that was culminated together along with all the other emails that have been provided to the commission.
Thank you. It was on, Mr. Serna's, on the cover page of his report. It was referenced. I also wanted the record to reflect that there was no person claiming party status that appeared to speak tonight, and therefore there would be no affected party who participated in these hearings. Finally, I'd like to confirm Ms. Tierpanny as an expert witness in that her May 10 testimony with respect to the compliance with the comp plan and the land development regulations is included in this record.
Yes.
Thank you. The applicant and the property owner has the right to rely on the comprehensive plan that the city has. We've heard a lot about following the law and your obligations as elected officials, and that is one of the obligations. The city has adopted this comprehensive plan. It adopted a special area plan several years ago, and then it adopted amendments to that special area plan. Each of those create the framework that any property owner can use to rely upon and to determine what he or she wants to do. Mr. Holton's family has owned this property for over 50 years, and through this time, his family's expectation has been consistent, to follow the rules and follow the law and have that same respect of the city. He would like to develop his property consistent with your plan, and the comprehensive plan of the city sets forth its vision. You've heard a lot of conversation that perhaps that plan isn't what the citizens today want as their vision, and so that's a different matter. That is not what's before you tonight. Before you tonight is the request for the approval of the development agreement, which memorializes the plan that was already approved as part of the planned development rezoning that this commission approved on May 10, and memorializes the obligations of the developer in the city with respect to that plan. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan, it's consistent with the land development regulations, it's consistent with the state statute that outlines how development should proceed. And Mr. Holton has a right to rely upon each one of those laws. We respectfully request your approval of the development agreement and moving forward with this development. Thank you.
Yes, Cole.
Yes, I have nothing further to add other than we did find this in compliance and with the appropriate review criteria, and we do recommend approval, and would be glad to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Any further comments from the staff, Mr. City Manager?
Staff recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, I'll undertake a motion for the development agreement for the Holiday Isle Marina.
I'll make the motion for the development agreement for the Holiday Island Marina.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I just want to make absolutely clear. The motion is to approve it, correct?
To approve it?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the development agreement for the Holiday Isle Marina.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from the commission? Good to see, or please take the floor.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
All right. Next at this time...
I want to take a break.
Before we move forward to the next development agreement, I believe the vice mayor wanted to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi and good evening to all you ladies and gentlemen, and all you folks out in computerland and TV land, I guess. I've worried about our city, so I felt I must talk to you about a reputation we are building here with a small group of about 20 people, if there even have 20. In the 54 years that I have lived in Madeira Beach, I have never seen so vicious, nasty, disrespectful people trying to destroy our city manager, our employees, degrading the commissioners and our mayor, over two developers trying to build developments they have every right to do. Why do our personal lives have anything to do with this? These folks come to make Madeira Beach into a city of pride and progress and a place that tourists, folks, would love to come to, a destination in the north end of our city. You know, we already have a destination in our south part of the city called John's Pass. And our beautiful beach is in the middle of these two ideas. And if you don't blame me, go out there and take a walk on the beach, it's beautiful. There'll be lots of things to do and see. How about an evening stroll on the Baywalk, starting at the Madeira Way and ending under the bridge to the Love Rock property? Or visit our Rock Park. You may be lucky to see a ballgame, catch a spring event, and at a special event, stop and take a look at our city center. In these last four years, under the leadership of our city manager Shane Crawford and your city commissioners, we have one of a kind, a 9/11 memorial, the ROC Park, and new recreation facilities, a state-of-the-art city center, new fire department, restoration of our Archibald Park, and all new beach accesses. And also, just recently, I hope that you all noticed the large, big palm trees that go down our, are in the middle of our town down in the Gulf Boulevard. You folks who are trying to destroy it, there are many things you folks could do for your city other than what you have been doing these last months. And Elaine, I'm so sorry you have left your fellow commissioners and choose to join up with this hate committee. Our employees, there are none better. Shane, what a team you have built for this city. I've had a great time these 54 years. My resignation, I'm handing to the city, really plays, and gave, and I gave a copy to the commission, the mayor, the city manager, and our attorney. Tonight, I'm ending that career. I have 83 years, 54 which I gave to your city. I'm way too old to be thinking about this nasty stuff that goes about town. I love this city, the folks that work here with us for many years. So I'd like to say to you, think about your community. Think what you can really do to create a Madeira Beach that we'll be proud of always. This has been our project right here for 40 years. This has been my project for 40 years in this town. I have gave most of my life, 40 years, to this city. So with that, I would say to you, I'm resigning tonight. God bless you all. I love you, and I wish you all good things. I'm leaving for North Carolina, my fellow...
Wow. You know, I'd like to say to you is, being the mayor of this city, traveling around this county, working with our state representatives, other people around this county, you are well-known and well-respected for the things you've done for the city of Madeira Beach. God bless you, and I love you.
Thank you, honey. Thank you.
Tell you what, folks, we're going to take about a five-minute recess.
We're reconvened at 9:05 PM. Mr. City Attorney, I believe the next thing up is the development agreement for the Madeira Beach Town Center.
That's correct, Mayor. And again, we're treating this as a quasi judicial hearing. If there is anyone that has appeared tonight that hasn't already been sworn under oath, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in. Anyone else that hasn't already been sworn? Okay. So, Mayor, this development agreement, again, is here for your consideration. We're gonna treat it the same way as we did at the last hearing and let the applicant go ahead and start. Before we do that, though, Kate, I just want to make sure, is Mr. Trot, did he appear? Mr. Lippa? And Mr. Gay, William Gay? Okay. So, we don't have any of those parties in the audience. Kate, are you ready to proceed, then? This is Attorney Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. And if we could, would it be possible to open both hearings together?
Mayor, that's a good question. We may be able to save a little bit of time in the presentation. We did that once before. That is what my suggestion is, is that you hear both the development agreement issue and the rezoning ordinance at the same time. I'll have to read the title eventually, and you'll have to vote on them separately. But if we could save some time in presenting it together, and that's what I would suggest that you do.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the Commission. My name is Kate Wells. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Shoemaker Loop and Kendrick at 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 2800 in Tampa, Florida. Before we get started, I wanted to take a moment to introduce our team. On behalf of the applicant, Madeira Beach Development Company is Bill Karns. Many of you know Mr. Karns based upon his involvement with Rock Park. Also present, Tim Clemmons, a registered architect with Mesh Architecture; Robert Pergilisi, a professional transportation planner with Gulf Coast Consulting; and Cindy Terrapani, a professional urban planner with Florida Design Consultants. On May 10th, our team provided the Commission with a full presentation of our rezoning application. Since we've not made any changes to the rezoning application, and in order to not take up more of your time this evening, we will forego putting on another presentation, and instead, I wish to confirm for the record that the evidence and testimony from the May 10th Commission meeting, as well as the Planning Commission hearings on March 14th and April 28th, are incorporated into the record of tonight's hearing. And just to be clear, that record would include the video and transcripts of the neighborhood meetings held on March 9th, our application for rezoning and supporting documents, the expert testimony, presentation, and renderings presented by Tim Clemmons, the expert testimony, presentation, and planning analysis dated May 6th presented by Cindy Terrapani, the expert testimony, presentation, and traffic analysis presented by Robert Pergilisi, and the resumes for each of our experts. So, if I could just ask for that confirmation on the record, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. When I appeared before the Commission on May 10th, I described the nature and purpose of a quasi judicial land use hearing and how it differs from a legislative hearing. When this Commission wears its legislative hat, the Commission is creating citywide policy by adopting regulations. On the other hand, in a quasi judicial hearing, this Commission applies those adopted regulations. The purpose of the hearing is to fairly, even-handedly, and impartially determine whether we have met the city standards for our applications. Your role in a quasi judicial proceeding requires you to review our project against the existing regulatory framework. This includes the city's comprehensive plan, the special area plan, and the city's code of ordinances, and to decide if we establish compliance with your code by competent and substantial evidence. With respect to our rezoning application, the criteria to be met are set forth in Sections 110-391 and 110-393 of the city code. And with respect to our application for development agreement, the criteria are set forth in Section 163.3227 of the Florida statutes and Section 86-145 of the city's code. On May 10th, each member of our team provided expert testimony and documentary evidence that our rezoning application complies with each of the applicable criteria. In addition, your materials include staff reports which provide a detailed analysis as to how our applications comply with the city's standards and conclude by recommending approval of our applications. In connection with the rezoning application, my client and the city negotiated a development agreement which is before you this evening. Section 163.3227 of the Florida statutes and Section 86-145 of the city's code require a development agreement to include certain items. I want to briefly describe those items and identify where in the development agreement we are in compliance with those requirements. The first one is that the development agreement must include a legal description of the land subject to the agreement and the names of its legal and equitable owners. This can be found in Exhibit A of the development agreement. The agreement must establish the duration of the agreement. Section 4 confirms the duration of our agreement and provides that it will terminate upon the earlier of either the date on which all phases of construction are complete or 15 years from the effective date. The development agreement must identify the uses which will be permitted on the land, including population densities and building intensities and height. This can be found in Exhibit D of the development agreement. The agreement must also include a description of the public facilities that will service the development. These are described in Sections 10 and 11. The development agreement must include a description of any reservation or dedication of land for public purposes. Paragraph M, Section 9.9, and Exhibit F identify those areas within our development that will be accessible by the public and which will be established by recorded easements. The development agreement must include a description of all local permits approved or needed to be approved for the development of the land. These are identified in Paragraph P and in Section 12. The development agreement must include a finding that the development permitted or proposed is consistent with the local government's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. This is included in Paragraph L. The agreement must include a description of any conditions, terms, or restrictions, and other requirements determined to be necessary by the local government for the public health, safety, or welfare of its citizens. These conditions are included throughout the agreement, including but not limited to Paragraph P, Section 9, including subsections 9.1 through 9.11, Section 13, and Exhibits C and D, which detail the offsite roadway improvements that my client will be responsible for designing, funding, and constructing. The development agreement must include a statement indicating that the failure of the agreement to address a particular permit, condition, term, or restriction shall not relieve the developer of the necessity of complying with the law governing said permitting requirements, conditions, terms, or restrictions. This is included in Section 6. And finally, the development agreement may provide that the entire development, or any phase thereof, may be commenced or completed within a specific time period. Sections 4.1 and 9.7 describe the phasing plan that we negotiated with the city. It allows the property to be developed in five separate phases. It allows for more than one phase of development at any one time. It requires my client to apply for building permit for the first phase of development within three years of the effective date, and requires my client to thereafter file an application for building permit for each subsequent phase within three years of the immediately preceding phase of development. I, as well as members of my team, are available to answer any questions. Before that, I wanted to turn the presentation over to Cindy Terrapani just very briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Again, my name is Cindy Terrapani with Florida Design Consultants. I'm the Vice President of Planning. Been a planner for over 35 years, and I believe you've qualified me previously as an expert witness in planning. I'm here to talk tonight about the Madeira Beach Town Center project proposed by Mr. Karns. I represent Mr. Karns and his team. The future land use plan designation on this site is PRMU, Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use. It is also subject to the Town Center Special Area Plan. Most of the site is in the commercial core, that is, both of the hotels, the retail, and condo B, and a small part of the Marina, well, a portion of the Marina. The rest of the site is in the causeway district. That includes the rest of the Marina, the Dockmaster office, and condo A, as well as related parking. The property is eligible to use the resort facility's high provisions with regard to increased density for hotels because it does meet the criteria, and it's more than three acres at a 6.7 acre site for Mr. Karns' site. He is eligible for up to 125 hotel rooms per acre, 15 residential units per acre, and a maximum FAR of 4.0. The project that's proposed meets that, actually is less than that criteria, but does comply with those dimensional regulations. In order to use that additional density, as you well know, the site must go through the PD rezoning, on which we're here tonight on the second reading for that rezoning, and also, a development agreement is required to implement that, and we're here tonight on the second public hearing for the development agreement. Based on this summary and my detailed planning analysis that was presented to you at the May 10th public hearing, it is my professional opinion that the Karns Town Center project is consistent with the city's comp plan. The project is consistent with the PRMU, Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use Plan category, and the Karns Town Center is consistent with the special area plan, especially and specifically with regard to the commercial core for most of the property in the causeway district for the northern portion. It complies with the uses allowed in the special area plan and the development standards and the policies of that plan. I also want to note that the site plans and the architectural package for this project were not only contained in the PD that you're hearing tonight, but they are also attached to the development agreement, and they are an integral part of that development agreement and are binding upon the developer. The rezoning for this project was approved on first reading on May 10th. Tonight is second reading. And since the project is consistent with the comp plan, the special area plan, the PD requirements, the proposed DA is consistent, the proposed project and DA are consistent and properly before you for review tonight. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, the city's gonna present. Mr. Serrano will do that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Luis Serrano with Calvin Giordano &amp; Associates, presenting staff comments. This application has not changed since the first reading, which was on May 10th. We did do a detailed analysis, and we did do review of the 28 criteria that are in the staff report, and our findings, I won't go through each one, but our findings are that it is, the proposed rezoning and PD is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as, and we cite specific policies, as well as the special area plan and the land development regulations in regard to the PD regulations. So, our recommendation was for approval. At the April 28th hearing, the Planning Commission also recommended approval of the rezoning from C3 to PD, based on the accompanying concept plan and subject to the revisions contained in the development agreement. We've also completed a review of the development agreement, and based on the criteria of the land development regulations contained in Article 4, Chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances, we are recommending that the attached development agreement for the Madeira Beach Town Center, in support of and as a condition of approval of the planned rezoning, be approved. And I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the city?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, now is the opportunity for the public to have, present any type of testimony that they want to present.
Madam C. Clerk?
Mike Noble?
I just want to thank you for all your hard work, and I've been in Madeira Beach. I invested out here 20 years ago, and I remember back in the day when the mayor, I've been a three-time planning commissioner. I remember when the mayor came through, ponytail and all. And even Shane's catching on with the haircut now. So, thank you, Shane, for your hard work. I know that's tough to do it, the planning commission. We really took a long look at this. We've listened to everybody. And I am for this project. There's not a business owner out there that I've talked to that was against it, so I'd like to have a voice for them. My neighbors are all for it. I had a lovely lady came to my house with a petition. We had a wonderful conversation. I couldn't respect her more and appreciate what they did, but I think the city made the right decision. It's tough to do, but you did it. I believe this is what democracy looks like, and I just want to thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Robert Shaw? Sean Ray?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and distinguished commissioners. Again, I am here representing the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce. Simply briefly recap my previous statements in regards to, with full board approval and through our community advocacy agenda, the Beaches Chamber, Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce is in full support of redevelopment of our densely populated beach communities. We consider it to be necessary for us to redevelop the blighted and underperforming areas in order for us to remain competitive in the tourism market, not only in Florida, but around the world. Specifically to the Madeira Beach Town Center project, bed taxes with rooms, 430 transient rooms at a 77% occupancy, will generate approximately $2,748 a day in daily tourist bed tax, which amounts to approximately $1,3067 annually. There's 319 parking spaces available at the city rate of $1.50 an hour, generate approximately $5,700 or up to $5,700 per day in parking revenue. According to Visit St. Pete Beach Clearwater, the 2014 and 2015 fiscal year report, for every dollar collected in bed taxes, it generates $235 spent within Pinellas County. Based on those numbers of $1,3067 in annual bed tax revenue, that's approximately $235 million in revenue brought directly into Pinellas County, which creates tremendous opportunity for our small businesses and allows us to continue to employ residents of Pinellas County. The Chamber commends the city, the city planning commission, and the developer for working so closely together to meet the height and density requirements and regulations our exceeded in most cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Paul Tilka?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm up here again just want to cover the fact that we did, in fact, collect 1,046 signatures from people, registered voters here in Madeira Beach. And it seems to me that, you know, this is, will come to light eventually, but so much of this seems to be involving tourism. And we live here in the city. Residents of the city live here and want to enjoy the city. We want to include tourists among us, but this city is not particularly just for the tourists. It's for the residents of the city. And I think that that should be paramount in your consideration as to what the people that put you in office want. That's all, simply put. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Linda Tilka?
Again. There's just one other thing that I'd like to say is that, you know, we have such a lot of really neat people that live in this city, and I've met them. Like I said, I did pick up the, you know, the signatures. We do want change. We do want this garbage gone from all around our city. We do. But we want, I feel we should have quality, not quantity. So, let's bring quality people in instead of all the, as many people as we can to grab their money and just mess up our city. Isn't that better? Quality? Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Di Benedetto?
Let me do it right again?
Just do Frankie D., and it'll make it so much easier, Madam C. Clerk. And Frankie's a fellow Italian. I appreciate you not talking with your hands as much. It might get you in trouble.
I'm Frank Di Benedetto, and obviously, I live here in Madeira Beach, and I'm honored to be part of this community. I think one thing that, you know, a little harassment towards this development for Bill is that I just got done spending $1,600 a person to fly all the way to Mexico so I could sit in a bench near a pool with palm trees, and I could have done it right here because the way this development is going, there'll be benches, there'll be chairs and tables between the road and the development that they're creating, which is what I paid $3,200 to go do, and I could have just gone seven blocks and been there. So, I think the great, the idea that they're doing, the development you've already brought to the table, is great. The development that they have done is nowhere in Clearwater. There's no place you can go in Clearwater and sit at a table except McDonald's or Frenchie's maybe, and everything else is a building to the sidewalk. So, I think there's been a lot of pre-planning by this for this development for Mr. Karns, and I think that the whole idea that you people have brought to us has been very grateful, and I appreciate it, and I think that we'll go forward. One thing that somebody made a comment, just for harassment, is green is money, and you're right. But green is also mildew and algae, and it's stagnant, and we don't want to become stagnant. Thank you.
Helen Palladino?
I can't believe it, but the last time I spoke, someone said I had to speak up, so it's never happened to me before. Okay, fifth time I'm up here addressing a commission of this city, and again, please vote yes on this project, the Madeira Beach Town Center Development Agreement. Our downtown needs a lift, and boy, what a lift are we getting. I love Mr. Karns' proposal. I love the open courtyard, just like Frankie talked about, on the corner of Gulf Boulevard and 150th, much, much better than a parking lot. And I love the modern look of the development that's being proposed. It complements buildings such as the one we're sitting in right now. I believe our new downtown development will increase my property values, and I think it'll increase the Madeira Beaches' reputation among all the other beach towns. And so, I would love to see that happen. So, I have a personal issue in wanting to, obviously, have my property value go up, and I would love our town to be looked at as a jewel, and so, please vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palladino.
Reese Noren?
Are you okay?
Sorry, it's me again. The important things in this particular project is that it is the nuclear of the business community that was adopted, I think, in 1999 when we were doing the master plan. Was that when it started? My forgetter's getting a lot better with age, my memory not so much, but I can't remember the dates as well. the dates as well as I used to. But I thought it was important that the businesses would be focused in the business area rather than impact all over the residential areas and the other beach areas. So, I am in favor of this, and I think it is well-conceived by that board at the time. I guess most of you weren't on those boards at the time, but it was, I hate to see Pat resign because she's just an institution in this place. In fact, if I wasn't sitting here staying up late, I'd probably be over in her little bar, but it's not there anymore. But anyway, the important thing is, the objections, those people that signed the petition, I've talked to several of them in my complex, by the way, I live over here in the yacht club. And I think they were well-intended, but I do believe they were misled because they felt that they could just alter a few things in the development, and it would help control the traffic. And they didn't realize that if these ordinances are declared null and void, then there is no development. Not, it's not overdeveloped, it'd just be zero, we'd have to start from ground zero. So, I am in favor of passing them as they are. Maybe, I talked with Mr. Kearns just prior to this meeting, I don't know if there's any way it could be reduced, because the large number of people that I've talked to are opposed to the vertical development, at least that's what they say. Many of them really just don't like change, but that's part and parcel of what goes on. Again, thanks for your time, and especially thank you for all your effort, because you guys work a lot harder than you get paid for.
I gotta ask you one question. I ran into your wife at the grocery store, and she gave me a few of your secrets. How many aircraft carriers have you actually flown off of?
Ten.
Thank you for your service to our country.
My pleasure.
I've only watched you fly off the end of your dock, so I know what you've got.
Hello again, Mayor, Commissioners, members of City Council. I've been very fortunate, Jeffrey Brown, just for anyone that may have forgotten. I've been very fortunate to serve on the Zoning and Planning Commission. I've had a very nice inside look at what's going on here. And once again, I'll just have to say, the Clearwater development, come on, not even close. You gave us a playbook, we're using that playbook. Mr. Kearns is coming in, I'm pretty sure at 49 percent of what he could develop in that area. I think that's the proper number. I don't know how much more reduction you could ask for, you know, when the gentleman is given 100 percent, and he's giving us a football-sized field park that we have a beautiful water view, have a great green space now coming into the city, and a nice gathering place at the corner of Gulf Boulevard and Tomstert Causeway that we don't have right now. So, I would urge you to do your due diligence as we have. We would not have sent you this had we not listened to the people, and if we had not done our due diligence. I feel that Mr. Kearns is well within his scope of development, and I keep hearing "responsible" development. And I just don't know how much more responsible we can get. So, I truly hope that you'll look at what we've sent you, and I certainly hope that you say yes to this this evening. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. William Shakespeare said, "All that glisters is not gold." The zoning that Mr. Holton and his family had was for marine and commercial use. It's now been bumped up to a different zoning. The zoning that, oh, sorry. The zoning that people had for the properties around Madeira Way that Mr. Kearns bought was also different, and I hope that they've been reimbursed for the new zoning capacity. And I was reading the ThinkSpot letter. There's a couple of places, Commercial Court, it's on page two. It says, "The Madeira Beach Town Center do not fully comport with the special area plan." And on page five, "Legal research is necessary on this amendment. It appears that the city of Madeira Beach has delegated the density and intensity standards for the redevelopment mixed-use land-use category to the Pinellas Planning Council countywide planning rules. It is unclear why the city has taken this approach, or whether it is proper." And I have a little display item for people. It's a headstone. For those behind me that can't see it, it says, "Rest in peace, democracy in America." Born 1776, Boston. Died 2016, Madeira Beach. Again, I'll go to the Tampa Bay Times, May 17, 2013. "But if they can get 800 to 900 signatures, which is probably more than have voted in most elections, the issue certainly needs to go to referendum, comma, quotation marks, Crawford said Friday. And I hope that Mr. Copper keeps his word." And I think that's it. Thank you so much, everyone.
James Scarborough. There's, did James Scarborough leave? Jim Everett.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Everett, 15458 First Street Eats, right here in Madeira Beach. The referendum did pass in Treasure Island. They can only build five over parking. They have no new construction. They are now trying to go to a boat for a PD in November because they're starving. So, when you put those kind of restrictions on development citywide, you can't get, you're not going to have development, because they can't make any money. So, you can make the rules, but if you make rules that no one's going to play by and show up to play by, they're not going to do any good. I'll speak also for the developers that we're talking about. Jim Holton, it's already been mentioned, that property's been in his family for generations. He's local, he's served on many statewide boards, and represented Pinellas County, and does today. He's a member of our community, and he's going to build something that he's proud of and leaves a legacy for his subsequent generations. Bill Kearns is also local. He's already built the Eco Village right there on Gulf Boulevard. Now, look what was there before, and look what's there now. You can't say that's not a substantial improvement. You can't say it's not a quality bill, and you can't say that it doesn't fit on the space. Who wants some green space between you and 150th when you're walking down that road? Right now, that sidewalk is right up against the road. A big 350 Ford truck goes by with a mirror on it, and you're walking too close on that sidewalk, it's going to knock your head off. Now, you're going to have a big, wide, green space to walk up and down there, you're going to have a park down here on the corner, you're going to have open green space here on 150th. You're going to eliminate all those turn-ins that are there now that cause people to slam on their brakes, trying to go in and out of those cut-ins and cut-outs. Those will be eliminated. So, this development, we spent a lot of time on the planning commission reviewing this. The original plan that Mr. Holton's team brought to us was revised, and densities and heights were lowered. Mr. Kearns' development is about half of what he could do within the maximums of the PD, so I think they're very responsible, and I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Once again, I am Rick Colley, pastor at Crossbridge Church, just on 153rd. And I'll just add one thing to the comments I made earlier. On a weekly basis, we have dialogue with people who are passing through town. We would like to see some people stay, to shop, to visit, to do something more than just go someplace else to spend their money. And we believe this project would be helpful to that, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Jeremy Runel. Jeff Beggins.
Real quick, because I know it's going to, one thing from the obvious perspective that I think a lot of people are forgetting is, when the Holiday Inn was here, that a couple hundred hotel rooms, what was Madeira Way like? And what were the shops around 150th? There was people, there was activity, there was stuff going on. And granted, that wasn't the best hotel, but it was a hotel. So, now we're going to, basically, to be putting back the couple hundred rooms that we lost, plus getting a couple hundred more, so it's not really the impact, everyone's kind of blowing out of proportion. So, obviously, people know that, but I think it's important to understand as you vote yes tonight, so thank you.
Heidi Goldberg. Oosh, I'm not going to try to say your last name.
I'll repeat it again. Oosh Kovaii. A resident of Madeira Beach for 12 years. You know, I live in the snug harbor next to, almost next to, Jim Holton's property. There's a marina between us. And I go to the beach, I walk to the beach often, I walk even across the bridge, and I look and I say, you know, there's something should happen here. This is just not looking good. From a resident's point of view, I'm wishing, I'm hoping, I'm dreaming that something good will happen. And it looks like it's about to happen. So, I would like to publicly thank Mr. Kearns and thank Mr. Holton for taking that giant risk to improve our city. Often enough, when I think of going to a restaurant, I look around and I really don't see a lot of quality restaurants here, so I drive to Tampa. I'm tired of that. I would love to have, to be able to walk next door and have a nice restaurant. If I weren't confident that after this development, the citizens of this town would not be happy, I wouldn't be supporting this project. You know, you really have to be in a world of development to sort of have that foresight and picture what this development will look like. So, you know, being in this world, I can picture it, and I'm really happy for it. I'm really that happy that it's about to happen. So, publicly, thank you very much for the developers, thank you very much for this council. You guys are bright.
I have no more cards.
KB, rebuttal or summary by Ms. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Trask. As I mentioned at the outset of tonight's hearing, the commission is required to make a decision, not based upon popular opinion, but based upon facts that constitute competent substantial evidence. Although some residents have shared their opinion that they do not like this project, I did not hear any competent substantial evidence that the applications do not meet the criteria in the city's code. On the other hand, the testimony and evidence presented by your planning and engineering staff, as well as the testimony and documentary evidence presented by Tim Clemmons, Robert Pergillisi, and Cindy Tera Pani, that are part of the record tonight, constitutes competent substantial evidence that the proposed development meets the applicable criteria in your code. A provision in the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act caught my attention, and which I believe accurately summarizes the purpose of tonight's hearing. The Development Agreement Act, which authorizes local governments to enter into development agreements with developers, states that the purpose of the act, in part, is to provide certainty to developers in the approval of development and assurances that they may proceed in accordance with existing laws and policies. We respectfully request that this commission apply the city's comprehensive plan, special area plan, and code, as these regulations exist today, and approve both applications. Thank you.
Mr. Serna is going to present a summary for the city.
Yes, just like to remind you, based on our findings, which are in both staff reports, we are recommending approval of both items. The recommendation on Ordinance 2016-01, which is the rezoning, on page 13 of 13, is that the specific provisions and conditions as set forth in the accompanying development agreement be a condition of the rezoning. But again, on both items, staff recommendation is for approval.
Mr. Mayor, there's one other thing I want to bring to your attention. In paragraph 3.3 of the development agreement, there's a blank. And when you make this motion to consider, if it's to consider approval, I would suggest that we fill in the blank with the month of June. Let me just read that paragraph to you. It says, "In the event that this agreement is not executed by the developer on or before 5:00 PM on the 30th day of blank, this agreement shall be null and void and of no further force and effect, and any development permissions granted pursuant heretofore shall no longer be valid." That blank needs to be filled in. We assume that everything is going to be signed tonight if it's approved by the commission, but I would like a little bit more time there, and so I would suggest that it be the 30th day of June 2016, so that if it is approved, that blank will be completed. With that, the issue before you right now is the development agreement. I will need to read the ordinance by title only if we get to that point. Next.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the development agreement, Madeira Beach Town Center? Do you want to read that one by title only over, or do you want to?
I don't need to read the development agreement. I just need you to consider approval of that, and it would be subject to also approval of Ordinance 2016-01.
So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the development agreement for the Madeira Beach Town Center.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass the development agreement, Madeira Beach Town Center.
Second.
Okay, I just want to make sure then that we're with the understanding that we're going to fill in June 2016 on paragraph 3.3, and it's also going to be contingent upon the approval of Ordinance 2016-01. Mr. Lister?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any further comments from staff? Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to say the staff recommendation is for approval.
All righty. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges? Yes. Vice Mayor Shantz? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, next, Ordinance 2016-01. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ordinance 2016-01, an ordinance to the city of Madeira Beach, Florida rezoning certain real property, generally described as 15026 Madeira Way, 0 Gulf Boulevard, 0 150th Avenue, 15023 Gulf Boulevard, 15031 Gulf Boulevard, 0 Madeira Way, 15,000 Madeira Way, 15,006 Madeira Way, 15,015 Madeira Way, 15,040 Madeira Way, 15,042 Madeira Way, 0 150th Avenue, 200 150th Avenue, 206 150th Avenue, 210 150th Avenue, 212 150th Avenue, 352 150th Avenue, 388 150th Avenue, 390 150th Avenue, 410 150th Avenue, 420 150th Avenue, from retail commercial C3 to planned development PD District, providing for reading by title only, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was the second and final reading of Ordinance 2016-01 by title only.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 2015, excuse me, 2016-01 on the second and final reading.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any further comment, Madam City Clerk?
You're asking me to take the?
So, the question is, is there any comment from the public in addition to that? Everybody else has had an opportunity to speak, seeing none, then it's appropriate to take the vote.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
With that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, because I know some folks will be down. [applause]
All right, we're reconvened at 9:59. Next public hearing for alcoholic beverage permit, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um, we now have a planning director and so we're gonna go back to the way that it was when we had one before and she's gonna make a presentation and give your staff recommendation. All right. Michelle?
Hello, Michelle Lorton, not Dave, like it shows up front. Pursuant to Section 110-532, consideration of alcoholic beverage application of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Angry Pepper Waterside Restaurant is seeking to obtain a four C O P alcohol beverage permit for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor at Angry Pepper Waterside located at 4330 Dumie Road. Currently, Angry Pepper Waterside has a two C O P license but are requesting to serve liquor which requires a four C O P. The establishment is located in the C3 retail commercial zoning district. According to Section 110-539, the notice of public hearing has been properly sent to all property owners within a 300-foot radius 15 days prior to the scheduled consideration by the Board of Commissioners and it was also noted on, it was posted on the subject property. There are five findings that the Board of Commissioners much, uh, need to consider when approving the alcoholic beverage application. The first one is the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. This restaurant for which the alcohol beverage application is proposed is an existing restaurant along Dumie Road. Currently, this restaurant serves beer and wine but are requesting to also serve liquor. South of Angry Pepper Waterside is Publix and Walgreens and both have sales for beer, wine, and liquor. The proposed request for a four C O P will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. The extent to which, the second one is, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. The requested permit is for an existing restaurant located at 4330 Dumie Road, 90 feet from the intersection of Dumie Road and American Legion where there is a traffic light. It is not anticipated to create a significant increase in traffic congestion or present a, a safety hazard. And whether or not, number three is whether or not the proposed use is compat, compatible with a particular location. This site is an existing restaurant for which this application is proposed. The location is part of a commercial area that includes businesses that do sell alcohol. The property again is owned as C3 where restaurants are a permitted use. Whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety, the requested license is not anticipated to adversely affect the public safety. As I said before, Angry Pepper is an operating restaurant with a bar and has been located on Dumie Road for over 10 years without affecting the public safety. The applicant does not have any outstanding fines or penalties owed to the city. And staff received a letter from Mr. Denhart from the adjacent property owner's attorney and that is in the packet that was on the dais this evening. The letter addressed parking on the site, approval by staff for a site plan in 2014. The attorney provided a D E P application for four boat slips and a determination in Circuit Court that the easements were void and concerns regarding a handicap ramp and parking. Staff replied to Mr. Denhart's letter, and that's also in your packet, um, that this site plan, the site plan that was submitted and the revised site plan meets the parking requirements. In regards to the approval of the site plan in 2014, the owner submitted two easements, um, to the planning department that were recorded and based on that information, the site plan was approved. Not until the Circuit Court in 2015 were the easements to be void and of no effect. As stated earlier, the applicant has resubmitted a site plan that addresses the parking, the boat slips, and handicap spaces. The attorney then sent another letter regarding loading and unloading. The applicant is not increasing the size or changing the use, therefore it is a non-issue. Uh, staff also received a letter from Joseph Klein in favor of the application. Staff recommends approval for alcohol beverage application number 2016-03 to allow four C O P alcohol beverage license for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor for Angry Pepper Waterside located at 4330 Dumie Road for the reasons contained in this report. Um, we did have one condition that they addressed their handicap parking and on the new site plan, they did address that, so, um, we do recommend approval.
Thank you.
Does the Commissioner have any questions of staff? If not, we'd ask the applicant to step forward and make a presentation. No questions? Is the applicant here? I'm sorry.
Where do they put the handicap parking? Back up by the building? I don't see it online.
Pardon me, it's, the parking, the revised, is in that packet you received today?
Oh, it's in the dais. I got you, I got you, it's just not on here. Okay, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Commissioner Hodges, do you have a question?
Yeah, so at this time, we're also, we're going to go ahead and, for the beverage permit and also for the handicap parking.
Now, you have a decision to make tonight and that's whether or not that you're gonna approve the alcoholic beverage application to allow the four C O P alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor. That's the only thing that you are to consider tonight, um, in relation to the five criteria that have been gone through by city staff. You look at that five criteria. In addition to that, it is a public hearing and so you're gonna hear from the applicant and any other people that wanna speak, so. Um, you don't have to, um, do anything else. I think that the motion though, um, where staff is recommending approval requests that you condition it upon, the approval upon moving that ADA parking space, but otherwise you don't have to approve parking or address the parking issue.
Okay.
So, that answers your question. Is the applicant here? Sir, if you could step forward, tell us your name and your address and make any presentation you'd like.
My name is Jason. My name is Jason Goldstein.
Yeah, should be.
Jason Goldstein, attorney, St. Petersburg, on behalf of the applicant Angry Pepper Waterside. And, other than the, what has already been discussed, the five criteria, this, uh, and it's pretty much been discussed in detail, it's an existing restaurant that is situated for 100 seats. There's, there was some legal issues going on with easements that actually is not complete at this point in time. There has been a partial decision by the court regarding these easements, but irrespective of the easements, the existing parking that's at the premises as it stands right now is sufficient for the seating that's at the premises. So, the license itself, uh, shouldn't have anything to do with that parking. The only issue would be the handicap, uh, access which is, to my understanding, 1.6 feet on the side of the adjacent property. The remainder of it is on the Angry Pepper side. Uh, there is enough room to shave off, first, first there'd be enough room to shave off that 1.6 feet and allow the handicap access to be compliant at 36 inches and be completely on the Angry Pepper side. Uh, that would be the first point and if there isn't, or that can't be approved, then there is access around the backside of the restaurant for a, a newly constructed handicap access to be made. Other than that, there really is no other, uh, issue which you might hear from the adjacent property owner will be things that are outside the scope of this license and that don't affect the property owner whatsoever, other than disputes regarding those easements which have nothing to do with the issuance of the license itself. And we reserve some rebuttal time if need be.
And I just wanna go back to that. There is no issues with the ADA parking, correct?
No, there are, there are no issues.
Okay, thank you.
Did the restaurant change hands, owners? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, now would be the time for any other public comment and I believe Mr. Rubenstein is here. On behalf of Mr. Denhart and the next door neighbor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Lauren Rubenstein from the Law Offices of James W. Denhart. We do represent R E C Investments Incorporated, which is the adjacent property owner at 4332 Dumie Road and we would object to the four C O P license application. Uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce a copy of the correspondence that our office sent to all of you all earlier today. Did you all receive that? I'd just like to give that for sure to evidence.
This is not a quasi judicial hearing, so you don't have to receive evidence, but Lauren, they did receive all the letters and they are on the dais, just so that you know that.
Yes, and just for the record, we would submit that it should be quasi judicial, but we understand that it's being limited tonight.
Okay, and just real quick, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Mr. City Attorney, you have reviewed this letter and?
I've reviewed all three of them, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the courts agree in Florida, I did, um, hear that the planning and zoning director said that this was not a change of use, but the courts agree that an expansion from a two C O P to a four C O P is an extension of a use, it's an expansion of a use. And, a, as an expansion of a use, we would submit that the non-conforming parking on that property needs to be brought into compliance. And though four C O P application is before you tonight, parking is integral in that. Number one, they don't have a handicap parking space as of right now because of the void of easement. That would need to be accomplished. In addition, this application has a number of seats written on it in the application, 100 seats. In order to have 100 seats, they need 25 parking spaces. There's a number of issues that should be addressed. We need to make sure they have those parking spaces because of the concerns. But regardless of those, even if you consider the five factors, we submit that four of the factors would fail the criteria to meet, to, uh, award the four C O P. It will adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. It's located very close to the proximity of the offices next door. In addition, since Angry Pepper has been there, there has been a church that's established across the street and there are residents behind. Common sense dictates that if you grant a four C O P for this location, it's gonna be a little rowdier, it's gonna have more patrons, it's going to generate more traffic, it's gonna cause loud, uh, louder noise, there's going to be longer hours, which we would submit is not, um, and is not compatible with the particular location. In addition, uh, factors two and four which you're to consider are safety hazards and congestions. The off-street loading space is a major concern. Uh, currently, there is no off-street loading space provided and trucks now block Dumie Road in order to unload their goods, the beverages, the beer and wine. Obviously, an expansion of the use, it's gonna require either more trucks or an extended period of time that they're blocking the road. When they stop in front of that building, we then have people from my client's parcel trying to exit and go right. They have to go around across an additional lane of traffic and people exiting the Angry Pepper then are exiting in front of a parked truck and not able to see who's coming. We do submit that's a safety hazard. Addition, their proposed parking plan, which is proposed because a lot of those spaces do not exist currently, it leaves virtually no room for anyone to turn around because a lot of those spaces, 12 of them, would be grandfathered in. There's not the capability for the people coming in and out to turn around and exit. It's going to cause backup traffic onto Dumie Road and create a safety hazard and obviously that's just exasperated when these people have been concern, consuming liquor. This is a situation, it's an overbuild, it's a, too much of a restaurant and bar on too little of a parcel. Uh, it's premature to approve this without the parking issues being addressed and we've, um, submitted that in detail in the letter to you, so I'm not gonna go through all of those. But even without addressing those issues and those serious flaws, this application should be denied for the adverse effects it will have on the neighborhood that it operates, uh, or that it creates traffic congestion and a safety hazard and it's simply not compatible with that particular location. And that is your criteria, that particular location. And unfortunately, it's just not compatible there. It's not big enough, they don't have enough parking, it's always an issue now if you go out there and it's not even snowbird season. So, we respectfully ask you to deny the four C O P. Thank you.
And, um, just back to staff, one more time, looking at the traffic patterns, I mean everything's, far as staff's conclusion, you still?
Yes, and also, and as shown in your packet, they did submit a new site plan that shows all of the parking criteria, the widths of the driveways, ingress and egress, and they do have on those site plans a new handicap parking space meets city regulations, or I should say federal regulations, the size of that handicap spot. According, also, um, the attorney submitted D E P stating that there were only four boat slips. Originally, the applicant thought there were five, but he resubmitted with only four boat slips. So, they do meet all parking requirements.
Is there any other comments, Mr. City Attorney, or at this time I'll undertake a motion?
Uh, I just wanna make sure that there, is there anyone else, is there any rebuttal that you wanted to make?
I have.
Okay, so I would, you know, it's not a quasi judicial hearing, it's up to you, Mayor, do you wanna hear from him again?
If.
Does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so, sir.
If you, if you want, if you want, it's.
Anything else you wanna say?
Yeah.
Now's your time. We're tired, it's late.
If you just listen to what you were just presented with, it, this amounts to no more than an adjacent property owner trying to dictate what happens to the property that's next to them. Uh, that, how, why would they be concerned with the, the ability to turn around in that parking lot? That, it, they're on the property next door there. The deliveries, the, the restaurant, there's not proposal that the restaurant stays open later. There's not a proposal that there's gonna be more, there's, there's gonna be more patrons there. The seating isn't being increased, the seating is what it is on the premises. There's a, there's a plan that's been submitted that has the appropriate amount of parking spaces for the seating that's there and to suggest that someone is served liquor now instead of beer is gonna cause a rowdier crowd is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, you can't control what people are gonna drink and, and what they drink and what they're gonna do after that isn't dictated by whether it's liquor or it's beer. There's alcohol being served on the premises now, it's not gonna make a difference. There's bars, there's the, the VFW is right up, right up the road, there's a church across the street, that's, that hasn't been a problem. So, to, to that extent, I mean, it was just fairly obvious that it's just, there's a feud going on between two property owners and this is nothing more than just trying to control what goes on to, with the business next door, which is not right.
Thank you. Any other people from the public who wanna discuss this particular application? Okay, Mayor, it's back, back to the Commission then for consideration of the application.
All right, uh, this time I'll undertake a motion to, uh, for permit application number 2016-03 for a four C O P license.
I'll make the approval for, um, the alcohol beverage, beverage application 2016-03 to allow a four C O P alcohol beverage license for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion on the second, is there any further comments from staff?
I, I, I need to step in.
Okay.
There was a staff recommendation for the condition that the applicant moved the ADA parking space closest to the front of the building and, um, and so that was a requested condition and so I just wanna make sure in the motion that, that that was, you, you did that purposely, you did not wanna include that condition or did, did you wanna include that condition? Staff is recommending that you include it.
Okay, yes, I will include it.
Okay, so is that good with the maker of the second? Yeah?
Yes, that's per the site plan?
Yes.
The location of the handicap, per the site plan?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. A motion on the second, amended a motion and the, the comments?
I, I'm sorry, I have one question. You know, in John's Pass, we have, uh, certain, uh, times that you can deliver to the businesses and so can you make sure that your deliveries are done during, before you open? It's obviously better for you anyway. You know, you're, you're not gonna be able to get into your parking lot if you have your trucks parking, but, but we need to, uh, I don't know if we can, we can, uh, tell them when they can do deliveries or when they can't do deliveries. You know, in John's Pass, you can't do them after 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock.
Right.
So, does that ordinance, uh?
You can, you can include that in your motion as well, you can condition upon that if you wanted to do that, then my suggestion is you, uh, if it's okay with the maker of the motion to amend the motion to include, you know, that those deliveries are made within a time, certain timeframe included in the, included in your motion.
And I don't wanna tie a new owner's hands, I, I'm, I'm not trying to make you unwelcome in Madeira Beach 'cause we, we are, are always looking for, for good businesses, but we, we, everybody wants to get along here too. I'm, I'm, I'm listening to both sides, so we, we, we need to make sure that it's safe for everybody and that's all we really wanna know. Again, I don't wanna tie your hands and I, I just want you to understand, obviously the, um, handicap issue has to be resolved and the delivery should be in, in your best interest to be done where you're.
We try to make sure all deliveries are done before 11. Sometimes you see a truck coming there.
So, I'm, I'm not gonna stipulate that, but if I drive by at 2:00 and I'm gonna walk in and talk to the manager and there's a truck there, I'm okay, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm gonna stop down.
Are you looking for that, that motion amended to?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Just wanted to make him aware, wanted to make him aware of that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges? Yes. Vice Mayor Schatz? Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Next public hearing for alcoholic beverage permit, Mr. City Attorney.
Again, this is a matter that is gonna be handled by your new planning director.
Okay. It'll take me a few times, it's late and we've been doing this sort of way for so many years.
Uh, I know.
Michelle Lorton, planning and zoning.
It's not that ridiculous, I'm sorry.
Oh. Ready? Okay. Pursuant to Section 110-532, consideration of alcoholic beverage application of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Beachside Ventures is seeking a, to obtain a two C O P alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer and wine at a bar located at 13437 Gulf Boulevard. This establishment is located in the C3 retail commercial zoning. Pursuant to Section 110-539, the notice of public hearing has been properly sent to all property owners within a 300-foot radius 15 days prior to the scheduled meeting and it was also posted on the subject property. Again, there are five findings that need to be met. Uh, the first one was the extent to which the location and to the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. This bar has been in the same location for over 60 years and the new renters that have come in have, um, already made some considerable changes to the inside to clean it up and are also working on the outside. They will not adversely affect but will enhance the character of the neighborhood. The next one was the traffic generated as a result of the location. The proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Um, this will not create a safety hazard or generate construction, or congestion, I'm sorry, because they will be parking to the rear of the building, they will not be parking on Gulf Boulevard. They have an ADA parking space, three bicycle spaces, and two parking spaces located behind the structure and then they also have an additional 11 parking spaces, um, across the alley which have been part of the original use and is part of the lease agreement and cannot be used for any other site. Whether or not the proposed use is compatible, compatible with a particular location, the site is an existing bar along Gulf Boulevard. There are many bars located along Gulf Boulevard and the proposed permit for a two C O P is compatible for that location. Whether or not the proposed use would adversely affect the public safety, the site, I, again, has been here for a very long time and the new, uh, Lassies have done a tremendous amount of work and are putting the safe practices into play. Granting the permit will not adversely affect the public safety. Uh, they do not owe any outstanding charges or fees or fines to the city of Madeira Beach. We also received a letter, um, for Castaways from a Dr. Fedora and he had seven issues that he was concerned with. He was concerned with the patrons of Castaways parking in his parking space, um, requesting that Castaways have a 24-hour contact number in case there was an incident. He was concerned with disrupt, disruptive behavior from Castaways and wanted to know how they would control their patrons. The next three dealt more with the city as far as one-way signs, trash removal, and maintenance on that alley back there. And then he commented on a fatality that was in the front of Castaways. Castaways responded to that letter, um, agreeing to post signs for patrons to park only in the designated area, uh, posting their contact number and adhering to the city's noise, noise ordinance. Again, they, the four, five, and six were directed to the city. Castaways also indicated that the fatality was a pedestrian crossing from the west to the east, not the other direction. Staff recommends approval for alcoholic beverage permit number 1604 to allow a two C O P alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer and wine at Castaway Beach Bar located at 13437 Gulf Boulevard for the reasons contained in this report.
So, is the applicant? Is the applicant here tonight? Sir, would you like to step forward and make a presentation? If you could state your name and address first, please.
Good evening, my name is Eric Audit. Um, I reside at 744-924th Street in Seminole, Florida. Um, we, uh, we leased this bar, uh, after a, after it had been, um, uh, closed for a few months because of a fire and, uh, we have done approximately $40,000 in renovations into the bar. Um, the, uh, what we're looking to do is enhance the community, we are putting, uh, craft beers in there, we have, uh, we wanna make it a beach bar, not the fisherman's bar that it was for, for years. Safety concerns and all of that, you know, uh, I think were stated, were, were, um, responded to with that, you know, the Dr. Feder's letter. Um, I did speak with the owner of the property and he's had a 30, 30-some year relationship with Dr. Feder and it's all been good. Um, so, you know, and I've, I've met Dr. Feder myself and he was more than welcoming to, you know, about the establishment we're gonna do, you know, put in there. And, um, so, I mean, we're, uh, we're excited to be part of what I would consider the, you know, the resurrection of Madeira Beach and that's really what it is. And, um, you know, we, we could, we had the resources to go to other communities, uh, beach communities and, and buy or lease another bar. We chose to stay here. Uh, my wife's raised here, right, right back off of Boca Seaga which is behind us. Um, so, uh, you know, we, we're, we really, really like this town. We just sold our boat, our boat rental business that was Mad Beach Boat Rentals, um, so that we could do this venture. And, um, we're responsible, I have, uh, 25 years as a hotel executive in food and beverage. Um, I owned a consulting firm, um, and I consulted for high-end hotels, four and five-star properties, Ritz-Carltons, et cetera, around the world. Um, I know what it takes to make a, a good, you know, a good sound, uh, business decision and, and, and the atmosphere that I wanna see. And, um, we have two requirements and I've been running bars a long time and another, but one is my wife can walk in there alone and feel comfortable. And the other, the other is that everybody, when someone walks in, we greet them and we know them. So, that's part of the community. We wanna be part of the community. We want everybody behind us, around us, uh, across the street, people coming in, we wanna be part of that. We have a great product, um, and we're just looking forward to really, uh, you know, making it happen, so, thank you very much.
One question for you, Mr. Audit, do you have the, uh, parking striped on the vacant lot? Is there any striping or?
It's, it's a, um, it's a, what would you call it? It's, it's, uh, it doesn't have paving on the lot.
Right, is there any car stops or anything?
There's no car stops.
So, how to park when they pull in there?
No, um.
I know it's how you have it here, which is, you know, obviously a, a roundabout and then spots in the middle, so how are they gonna know where to park when they go on here?
I, I suppose we could, yeah, we could, we could probably, uh, put some type of, uh, of parking stops, I, you know, the expense of the concrete ones are pretty high, but I think if we could.
I just think it needs to be, uh, clear, clearer to how to park on this actual.
Okay.
Dirt, so if we could make that a little.
Sure, yeah.
For, for us, I'd feel more comfortable.
Okay.
And the only thing I ask is, uh, working with Dr. Bacon and Dr. Fedora would be, you know, whatever you can work out there because I know that, that. whatever you can work out there, because I know that Dr. Bacon came to me with a few concerns about patrons, maybe your patrons parking in their, and their type of parking dude are very busy with three...
Yeah, and, and you know, and I, and I, I told, I responded to, and I will speak with him myself, you know, when he gets back in town, he, he would have been here, Dr. Fedor would have been here, but, you know, that we're, we're going to post, I agreed to post a sign, and that's fair, that, that basically says, you know, you're...
That's what actually was said, and I think if you didn't...
Yeah, we, we, and I, and it's in my letter, my response to, you know, to that, that we're, we're going to post, say, look, there are designated spots here, and the signage that's on the building next to me, and if you do not park in those spots, you're subject to being towed. And, and you know, and I think out of respect for, for the owner of the building, he did not ever call the towing company, and my, my response to him was, please do. If, if they don't play by the rules, you know, do what you have to do to keep your property clear, you know, but we, we want to be good neighbors, and I think we will be. And, yeah.
You do, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else from the public want to discuss on this particular application? Okay, it's back to the commission, Mayor.
Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to consider alcoholic beverage permit application two thousand sixteen dash oh four for a two C O P license, beer and wine only sale by the drink for consumption on premises and package sales in sealed containers at the bar located at one thirty-four thirty-seven Gulf Boulevard.
Second.
I have a motion on the second. Is there any further comments from staff? Staff recommendations for approval? All right, now, the city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Shantz? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Next resolution, two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
I just wanted to mention to the city clerk before I did that, since Commissioner Shantz or Vice Mayor Shantz has resigned, you don't need to call her name any longer. It'll just be the four of them, so we'll just, you know, for the next ones, okay. So, resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by increasing general fund revenue in the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars, increasing general fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-one by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one six dash two one.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on the second. Is there any comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, what this does is receipt the donation money that you had received at the previous meeting and the nine thousand dollar contribution from the John's Pass Village Association for helping out in the parking lot, and then approving the expenditure of eighteen thousand dollars to do the parking lot. And then you see A underneath, we're going to waive the bid requirements and work with a vendor that we previously worked with to do it as cost effectively as possible. So...
It's two different motions though, correct?
Correct. So resolution twenty sixteen dash two one is recommended for approval for those purposes.
Is there any further comments? Would city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for waiver of bid requirements and authorization of expenditures.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion on the second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing is, we're going to each contribute nine thousand. Obviously, that doesn't equal sixteen six twenty-five, but we did want to have a little contingency in there in case we see something unforeseen.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Next resolution, two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by decreasing sanitation fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of two hundred and two thousand dollars, decreasing Marina Fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-two by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to pass resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion on the second. Is there any further comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, what this does is push two thousand sixteen money for capital project expenditures into the next budget that we didn't get to.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Would city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next reports and correspondences. Any Commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
No.
Just want to thank Commissioner Shantz for her service, and she will be deeply, deeply missed.
Absolutely, I agree with you there, Commissioner. And moving on, Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanted to talk to you for a few minutes about filling the vacancy now that Vice Mayor Shantz has in fact resigned. Under your charter, section two point two, parant C three, it requires that the vacancy be filled within thirty days of its occurrence by a majority vote of the remaining members of the Board of Commissioners. And obviously, once you fill that position, we're also, you're going to also need to appoint a vice mayor since you no, no longer have one. The city manager has some suggestions as to how that office can be filled, and so I'm going to, I'm done with my report, I'm going to hand it over to Shane.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Two things that I've got, obviously, you know, Commissioner Shantz, Vice Mayor Shantz is going to be missed. We do have to replace her within thirty days, so this is my suggestion, take it or leave it. We can have an ad in the beach beacon by next week, and Amy and I had met on this previous to time this out. We'll advertise for one week, we'll give people in the community one week to respond. That gives you one week to evaluate, and you'll appoint at the next meeting. So at the very next meeting, you'll be appointing somebody into that position, and they'll get to work right away. So it, it meets the charter requirements. It's, it's expedited, but, you know, I, I don't know if we'll be inundated or we'll be struggling to get applicants, so we'll, we'll have to see.
It's District Four, so...
It's District Four. We'll advertise on the website, you know, we'll, we'll put the word out as best we can. We'll probably issue a press release, so on and so forth, but that's how I suggest you do it. That's consistent with how we fill spots, like on the planning commission, so on and so forth.
Then at that meeting, now, we could also go ahead and...
Appoint the next vice mayor. Correct. So everything would happen at the normal B O C meeting in July.
Commissioners, are you good with that?
I, I've got one other suggestion too, just, I've been through this a number of times in different cities, and so I, I think that the approach that the city manager is suggesting is, is all encompassing. You're getting it from citywide, but I've also seen other commissions where the commissioners themselves, the three of you, decide who you want to be there without putting it out for that big, open consideration, and that is, is that you bring a name to the table at the next meeting with the understanding that you've talked to that person in advance and they're willing to accept the position. One other thing I would like to throw out there that is often heard of when these things come up is, well, there's going to be an election coming up, and do we want the person that we're filling this seat with to run as an incumbent at the next election, or do you want a commitment from the person who's sitting in that seat to not run at the next city election? So in other words, they're just filling in a spot. So I'm not sure if, if that's of concern to you, but those are the types of things that I hear as doing this over the last twenty-five years, that may be considerations that, that you want to think about. So whatever is your pleasure, the charter doesn't give you a whole lot of direction. We just know that it needs to happen within thirty days.
So we could actually go out, assist the commission, go talk to some people that we might think would make a great addition to the commission, and then if they said yes, bring their name for consideration by the other commissioners of that district, correct?
Yeah, obviously from that district. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, Commissioner, what do you feel?
They don't fill out an application or anything like that, do they? Just strictly...
There's no requirement for anybody to do any of that.
I mean, once they became a commissioner, they, there's a few things I'm...
They have to be sworn in, and, you know, all the other stuff that you would normally do when you get elected.
Just from my...
There's a couple of names there, I mean, what do you, what do you...
There, there are, you know, A, I, I don't mind that procedure. I think we might be criticized, you know, especially after tonight about not being, opening it up to the public, and you had the appearance of you guys cooking it, and you got, you had this replacement already done, which is not the case, but, you know, perception is, I know it better than anybody.
So let's get around perception. We'll do the applications. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So that's good. And I can't make a motion tonight to have Nancy do, fill in vice mayor? I mean, can we do that?
You might want to ask her first.
I, I, I make a motion that Nancy fill in...
I could pass you the gavel, and then I could second it, since you're the most senior commissioner.
But you don't even, you could actually name the new person, the vice mayor, and since they're filling in for, for Shantz, that, that might be a...
No, you want to do it, Terry.
Actually, if, if it's open discussion, actually, it's kind of rolled to you, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'd be sitting here watching.
I would, if, if we can, if we can postpone this conversation, please, and, and let's just stick to how we're going to do it, because...
Let me make a motion.
Well, you...
Just go to second.
I'm going to second?
Yeah, you got no second. I just, I think, you know, if, if somebody wants to apply, especially at a time of where we're at in Madeira Beach, I think they should frankly be able to, A, decide if they want to run again in March, and if there's an advantage of being the incumbent in Madeira Beach by getting appointed right now, I don't see it, you know, you know, sliding, sliding the rates.
I wouldn't want anybody to run.
Correct. And, and nor would I want them to promise not to, and they decide that they enjoy it. So I think, let's just stick with the actual applicant, it's consistent with every application process. Pardon?
I highly recommend, it's very enjoyable.
What's that?
Being a commissioner.
Yeah, you guys look like you're having a hell of a lot of fun. It's twenty to eleven, so. The only other thing under my city manager, oh, so did we have consensus? We'll do the application?
Yes.
All right, so we got there. The only thing that I have for you, and I spoke to Vince, and I spoke with the fire chief, and you may or may not be aware of this, and Terry, I know this is something that's near and dear to your heart, but the City of Treasure Island put out an R F P for their fire services to be taken over. It's not as simple as just taking it over. The R F P is laced with red tape, and, and I'm not a smart guy like Vince from a financial standpoint, but when I read it, I, A, the management would be difficult at best. I think it may be just a strategy, maybe, on behalf of their negotiating with their union, and frankly, after talking to Vince, there is no financial savings or any reason for us to get involved, because there would be no money to be made, except just more headache and management, and, and I, it's just a nightmare that I don't want to get into at this point. If we want to talk about merging fire departments and doing it in a cost savings manner where we each either save money or we can reap some benefit, that's fine, but while we still have the, the possibility of the other post up in Reddington and gaining those funds and doing that, I just, this is a nightmare that I don't need to jump into right now, if you don't mind.